We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on July 20, 2021 to order at 2:06 PM. I'm sorry, everybody. All council members are present. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item during or during the hearing of visitors' portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? I don't see anybody, so we will now recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from city manager Bradley Ford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. We have one slight change to the agenda. I believe you've got a Resolution 480, a redline version in front of you at the table. That's the only change for this afternoon. I did want to start off the meeting, though, with an employee recognition. This week, we had our new management analyst Sadie McAllen join the city manager's office. And Sadie, if you don't mind standing up, yeah? Sadie brings experience from several Texas cities, most recently the city of Missouri City down near Houston as their tourism manager. Sadie's taken on a role that you'll remember you funded two positions last year. We called them fellowships at the time, and the intention was that these would be, these two positions would be for the intention of growing our talent pool at the city so that when we have assistant directors or directors or other type of vacancies, we have folks ready to go. And so Sadie's the first hire of the two. We're excited to have her join. And Sadie, welcome to Waco. I know you're excited to get here. If you ever want to give her a round of applause.
All right. Informal reports today, Mayor and Council, we have one. It's the Emergency Housing Voucher for the City of Waco and the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition. It describes our efforts to increase the number of housing vouchers available for affordable housing.
City manager Ford, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off if you're going more in depth about this informal report. Sorry about that. Thank you for the informal report. Did have a question regarding the vouchers. It is my understanding from the information provided in our packet that there's a total of 500 vouchers statewide, correct?
That's correct.
Sorry. And is it 34 that are coming to the city of Waco, McLennan County?
So you want to give an overview?
Yes. So, apologies. So, the Housing Authority received 34 vouchers from HUD, and so those will be utilized through the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition.
Okay.
Okay? And so also, our staff, which is Ms. Siobhan Moore, she also applied on behalf of the Housing, I'm sorry, the Heart of Texas Housing Coalition for additional vouchers, which will be used within the surrounding counties.
Sure.
And so we do have some vouchers that may be available for City of Waco residents.
Thank you for that. I also want to make sure I understand. These 34 are not competing with the vouchers that are going through the Waco Housing Authority, correct?
No.
They're separate ones?
They're separate ones, but they will be treated the same.
Sure, sure, sure. But this gives us at least an additional opportunity to put more people through housing without having to compete with WHA?
Yes, that is true.
I just wanted to make sure that I was, excuse me, understanding that correctly. So thank you so much for the explanation. I appreciate it.
All right. Next up, wanted to highlight the five public hearings we have on the agenda today. Clint Peters from Development Services will be present here later in the work session to cover those. And then resolutions-wise, we have 35. Quite an agenda in front of the council today. I'm going to highlight seven with kind of grouped together, so don't be afraid I'm going to talk for too long. The first one is Resolution 457, which amends the fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget for the Cameron Park Zoo Fund by increasing their appropriations by $550,000 and increasing revenues by almost $850,000. These amendments are going to help facilitate repairs and improvements at the zoo ahead of our upcoming Association of Zoos and Aquariums accreditation inspections. That's a big deal. It happens every five years. It's coming up in the fall. It also allows us to increase our inventory for resale in the gift shop and café, and that's a great sign because we've just had phenomenal revenue growth over the last few months. Visitor attendance at the zoos near pre-COVID levels, and I can't believe I'm going to say this, but the zoo is really close to covering its expenses using this additional revenue. So that's a big deal. Kudos. I know we've got our zoo director, Chris Van Sky, and his gift shop manager, I believe, right? Michelle? Forgive me, I forgot Michelle's last name. Somebody holler. All right. Doing a great job. So thank y'all for being here and thanks for the great results, too.
Yeah, I'll just chiming on that, Bradley Holmes here. That's such an important part of the zoo, the merch sales and the attendance figures we're seeing coming back and the gate figures all come. It's such, it's, I know it feels good to everybody up here to have that kind of a recovery and that kind of, I'm glad that we're laying expectations. Buying more inventory to sell is always a, is a good deal because you've got margin in that, and it helps cover the costs out there. So great, great job, Chris, and appreciate you.
Thanks, council member. Next, I wanted to highlight Resolutions 464 and 465, another one that just is exciting to me, which approve a ground lease at Quinn Campus and authorize the expenditure of $2.7 million for the purchase of the Doris Miller YMCA. We're excited to bring this project forward, which will really allow for us to expand programming in East Waco and bring the facility closer into East Waco. We see that the purchase of this property is really serving as an anchor location, similar to how the East Waco Library serves. But there's some obvious benefits to this transaction, one being there's significantly more room at this site for parking. We also open up our abilities with the eight-acre lease that we have with Quinn Campus for additional outdoor recreation opportunities, and it's just a larger facility as well. Summer programming at the Y will continue until the transaction closes, which we anticipate later in September, and after that point in time, the facility will close for repairs and is expected to reopen in the summer of 2022. During that time, obviously, residents will still be able to go to the Bledsoe Miller facility that we operate near Martin Luther King Boulevard. So with that, I'd open it up for any council comments.
Thank you, Bradley, for highlighting this resolution. That is particularly dear to my soul. I was having a conversation earlier with former mayor Virginia Dupuy, and she mentioned to me how excited she was about the city of Waco making this purchase. I knew it was of particular importance to her because of the work that she and my mother, former mayor May Jackson, did to move the Doris Miller Y from the original Live Oak location to serve and sit on Quinn Campus. It allowed, as city manager Ford mentioned, direct connection with the community, to provide resources and of all kind, health, wellness, education, provided all kind of opportunities within the community, you know, furthermore solidifying its anchor entity. You all know, if you're Waco historians, that the original pathway into downtown came up Elm Avenue, and Quinn Campus served in many roles, but being the gateway and welcome to our city was certainly one. And to place that, the Doris Miller Y on that location, just was a boon for the community. We have an opportunity to do the same thing again. It was, it was with much consternation that we were trying to determine what would happen if we lost that entity. And because of the diligent and dedicated work of our staff, we found a way to that, to make sure that that was not an option. And so I appreciate your steadfastness in hearing the urgency in my voice and that of the community of keeping, making sure that our young ones, as well as our seniors, have a place to be, grow, and flourish. We've got so many opportunities to build and grow within this space. I know y'all, I'm gonna hush in a minute. I'm excited. But, go back, Bradley, one more, I know you're drinking. Go back and say one more time about the eight acres. What now?
Eight acre lease for 81 years, by the way, for very, very nice rate of $1 a year.
I mean, and all kind of things can happen on eight acres of field that we've been asking for within our community. So I'm super excited about that. I'm excited about the way that we will not only have a facility that remains in our community, an updated, upgraded community facility, because y'all know that was my issue. I was like, we've had, we've had updates to the community centers all around the city except for the Bledsoe Miller, so what are we going to do? And now we have the ability to not only enhance the services that we had, potentially the opportunity to expand the footprint of our community and the offerings and resources in our community, and add new and innovative ones as well. So I'm very happy right now, and I'm excited, and I look forward to the continued commitment of my fellow council members of seeing this through. No pressure.
No pressure. I don't think anybody wants to follow that.
Like to second those remarks.
Well said, council member, and we're excited, as your staff, to get to work on projects like this. It's very fulfilling. So, thank you. The next one I want to highlight is Resolution 480. It sets a public hearing date for August 31, 2021, for the schedule of drainage charges for the new municipal drainage utility system, and authorizes the publication of the proposed resolution and required notices. This public hearing will be used to receive comments on revisions of that schedule that allow for and include fee credits. That was important to the council at our last discussion, that we incorporate those into this plan, and we have. And also provides clarification on the rounding within the calculation for equivalent residential units.
City manager Ford, if I may, thank you for putting this together. I appreciate, A, being proactive in how we equitably service our community and pay for infrastructure that's much needed without it coming from the general fund, because there's so many things that the city of Waco is responsible for financially. And so coming up with a municipal drainage utility system fee that's going to allow for the growth that's still happening in places that we needed to happen, by the same token, still making sure that everyone is paying their fair share of this fee. When you have an infrastructure where the replacement cost is $766 million and the projected projects have $124 million, that's a huge dent in our general fund. And so when you do something like this, that will allow us to take that money in the general fund and do other projects, it has my full support. So thank you for highlighting this, but more importantly, thank you for the work that you and city staff has put into this. I truly appreciate it.
Glad to do it. All right. Our last set of resolutions, I'm going to kind of work backwards to these two. They're the Economic Development Business Grants.
Bradley Holmes here. Before we get to those, I just wanted to just quickly mention 478, 479, 482, 3, 4, all have to do with cost overruns. And I don't want to do this in a complaining fashion at all, but more of just a budgetary management. I appreciate the work that staff is doing to complete these capital improvement projects that we have. We've got a bunch of them. And in these kind of quasi-inflationary times, we're having to deal with additional costs here and still maintaining a budget, which I know is not easy. So I just wanted to express my appreciation, because there's a lot of them, when you take them all at once, they, you know, they are a lot of money, and you guys are still, or staff is still maintaining the budget that we approved. So good, good work on just the operational management there.
Thanks, council member. Some of those are pretty critical, public infrastructure, like on 484, that's a six-foot-tall raw water line that without it, we don't have a duplicated source to move water from the lake to the DAF plant.
Exactly.
The things that you really care about in the midst of storms and chaos. So thanks for that highlight.
Yep.
All right. So on Resolute, the final highlights of 459 and 460, those are the two economic development items. Proposing business grant agreements here in Waco, take those kind of as a group here. The first is an agreement with Hesselbein Tire Southwest, Inc., Gateway Properties LP, and Gateway Tire Waco for an estimated $16 million in new capital investment for a new building construction up at, on Alliance Park. It's about a 260,000-square-foot new construction. Will create 40 new full-time jobs, paying at least $15 an hour with health insurance benefits for all employees. And the business grant is projected to total about $526,000 over five years. The second economic development agreement is with Mars Wrigley Confectionery U.S. for a $23,000, $23,000 square-foot expansion of their existing site here in Waco, including capital investment of more than $30 million. Mars Wrigley is committed, as part of this agreement, to maintain their workforce of 620 full-time employees with the average annual wage of $45,000, with all positions paying at least $15 per hour during the duration of the agreement. This grant is projected to total approximately $550,000 over five years as well. And we're joined by Chris Collins, Executive Vice President of the Greater Waco Chamber. As we have questions on either of these agreements, she's able to join us here at the table for our discussion. Any questions on those two items?
I'll just, on the first one, the Hesselbein Tire Southwest, I love this one. It's a $16 million capital investment, and it's in a part of town that normally, it seems like we're incentivizing deals in D, D2, right?
Three.
No, D3, yeah, D3. D3, I'm sorry. Sitting in the wrong place. Yeah, D3 gets them all. But this one is in D1. I like the, it's not in D5. But, and it kind of hearkens back to the old General Tire thing. I don't know, there's some old part about me here, that there's a tire, you know, company in D1 again. So it's a, it's a good one. We haven't talked about this one too much, but it looks like a good investment. And supportive of the Mars Wrigley one as well, but that's all I had.
I wonder if y'all will humor me and allowing me to take off my councilwoman hat and put on my Prof Palmer hat for a second. But most of my expertise as a licensed social worker is in the anti-trafficking space, and wanted to share some pertinent details with y'all. So the U.S. Department of Labor estimates that 2 million children are forcibly employed in the cocoa industry every year. 70% of the world's cocoa, which is the main ingredient in chocolate, comes from West Africa, predominantly Cote d'Ivoire, which is the Ivory Coast, and Ghana. This has been a widespread, well-documented humanitarian aid crisis for over two decades. And in 2001, Mars, alongside several other major chocolatiers, committed to this congressional piece of legislation, which is called the Harkin Angle Protocol, which would eliminate the use of forced child labor and child labor in general from the industry. Mars, with their counterparts, has failed to meet these international and federal benchmarks for the past two decades. So as I sit up here as an anti-trafficking professional, I am incredibly concerned about this incentive deal. City manager Ford, Mayor Meek, and I had the chance to sit down with head officials from Mars's corporate office, their lawyers and folks from public relations, and they painted us this really beautiful story of work they've been doing really since 2018. And if I was seeing that in isolation, I would be encouraged by the work they're doing. It seems holistic. They are looking at this from a variety of angles. However, having been in the space of looking at the abuse and exploitation and trafficking of children since 2009, I am not convinced that Mars will make significant effort to reduce this incredible injustice from their supply chain. And I normally don't talk about my faith in a space like this, but I've been reflecting on Luke 10 with the Good Samaritan Parable. Thanks, Hector. And one of the questions that starts with the Good Samaritan Parable is this question of, but who is my neighbor? And we were elected to serve our neighbors of South Waco and North Waco and East and West Waco, but if 2020 showed us anything, it's that the decisions made in one remote corner of the world absolutely affect the rest of the world. And so I cannot, in good conscience, sit here and make a decision that looks good for Waco when we know it will come at the blood and sweat and tears and trauma of nine- to 15-year-old boys in West Africa. And for that reason, I will be voting in opposition of this.
Not in response to that, but I do, I mean, I agree that child labor, forced labor is not a good thing. But these internationals that are, international companies that are beginning to base in Waco, they have huge supply chain issues. I mean, up and down across different economies, the different supply, suppliers, different infrastructure, different legal environments, different operating standards and practices. And this is a commodity-driven deal, too. So, and as these companies come to Waco, I think it's important to me that we demonstrate that we're supportive of these corporations. And I think Mars, as I did a little bit of diligence on this, they've made, and I think you referenced it, a billion-dollar investment. I think they're very intentional of trying to get familiar and address the problems that you were talking about. And I'll be supporting this deal. I think they're a good, great community partner, a $30 million payroll in the Waco and 600-plus jobs. So I'm going to be supporting, voting yes for this.
Mayor and council, if I may, you know, council member Palmer has indicated her vote, it might be good if we just go ahead and call for this to come off the consent agenda and for deliberation later this evening on the, on our later business session. But I did want to afford the council the ability to ask any questions of Ms. Collins, who's here and serves as our chief recruiter, I would say, of business, and/or questions of me as city manager. We're here to answer those.
I do have one question. And if, you'll know if you need to answer it, whoever, because I don't know which. I don't remember a time when Mars wasn't here in this city. And I'm curious as to what their community outreach footprint looks like here. Because I know, I mean, clearly, the social impact of trafficking is devastating, as it has been for centuries, and will make no difference today in the importance and impact that it has on communities and lives. As council member Holmes mentioned, I don't know that there is a force in existence today without some manner of supply chain crisis. Simply the nature of the world. And while we better, we do our part in making those changes. And we do that in a way that we insist upon living wages and insist upon benefits that will allow families to grow and be healthy. Place, place resources in communities that do that. And, you know, with the optimistic realism that our good deeds and our intentionality in bettering our footprint will spread and share, because people can only be what they see. And if they see you doing well, perhaps it will encourage another to do well themselves. But I'm aware that Mars has the youth golf tournament and the things that they do. I wanted to know whether there are any other things that really impact Waco that they're engaged in supporting?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bearfield.
I can't hate you.
Mars has been a member of this community since 1975. They have employed hundreds and hundreds of individuals and helped to, to create job opportunities for families for, for decades. When we think about what that means and what their, their community impact has been, they utilize local suppliers, they have helped to locate additional businesses here. If you think about Sunoco Flexible Packaging came here as a direct supplier. So they're, they're doing things to help increase the supply chain within our own community that makes us even more attractive to other businesses coming in. When you think about the, the corporate generosity of the company, too, they have been a longtime supporter for a number of different charitable organizations within the community. They have been a longtime investor within the Chamber of Commerce through the Starburst Junior Golf Classic. They have done things that are health-related through the Skittles Wild West 100 Mile Bike Run. They are, they, they gave during COVID, they gave a $25,000 grant to the Shepherd's Heart Food Pantry because they understand that people are going through hard times. They are very generous with their staff as well. They have encouraged their staff to be active volunteers within the community, too, not just within the Chamber of Commerce, but across the, the community. They celebrate us as a community as well. They're very generous with their product and being able to provide that anytime that we need it as a community. You have different organizations across the community that will reach out, and they are very happy to give. And, and I think that that is just a testament of who they are as a company, what their family mantra is as far as giving and being a part of any place that they're located. And we've been glad to have them in this community for a very long time.
Before our overall requirement of incentivizing companies at $15 an hour, were they at an accelerated pay rate as an entity, as an industry?
Absolutely. They have been a leader, and they are an employer of choice in this community, where they have, they have helped drive the, the overall average wage up, and people seek out to work for them because they know that they have good wages, but they also have great benefits that go along with it. And so I think that they've helped set the standard for others within the community.
Chris, I have a question for you. Before you brought this to council, were you aware that there were, that there were open cases against Mars in the U.S. District Court of Appeals and other previous lawsuits that had been brought before them?
No, but it's not unusual for companies to have active lawsuits regardless. So it's, it's not something that we were aware of, though.
I wonder what you might suggest, just in terms of informed consent for us. We, today's agenda is 400 pages. We're looking at so many different things every two weeks. In terms of knowing what kinds of companies we're dealing with, could there be, is there a best practice in the industry of evaluating businesses in terms of their corporate responsibility, whether it's the safety of working conditions, wages, benefits, whether they have open lawsuits against them, whether there are, like with Mars, there was a massive series of exposes from notable trustworthy news sources. Like, could you or your team do some sort of evaluative practice and offer us a full range of this is the great that this company could offer, and also this is some potential harm that you are implicating yourself with if we were to get in bed with this company in an incentive deal?
Certainly, we're glad to go through and, and do search. I mean, there, there is a lot of information that's available on the internet. I don't think that anybody questions whether Mars has been a good corporate citizen locally and have been a significant contributor to the economy. So when it comes to things like that, we probably don't normally question that activity. But as far as when you're looking at litigation, companies are sued all the time. And to go through and to have to look at every one of those would be a very, it could be a very difficult process or, and take a long time to go through that.
I hear you. I think Bradley and I were talking about this in our earlier agenda review today, and it would be different if this was a law case of someone got injured on the job and they're suing for workers' comp. That, to me, feels like a very different tenor than eight grown men who were trafficked into the region and forcibly employed for major chocolate businesses. So like, obviously, there are large lawsuits all the time, but kind of evaluating how potentially problematic or big of a red or yellow flag this might present to us.
Would that be with, with that motion, with that, that piece right there? Would that be with, with that motion, with that, that piece right there, in established businesses? Because I know it's one thing to, for a new business to look at one thing, but again, this is 46 years that this company has been in the city. So is it a, some sort of evaluation that you're looking for to keep, I mean, because I'm not, I'm, help me understand?
Yeah, I think this child slavery in the cocoa industry is something that I have specific professional expertise on. And I think if I was not at this stage, this would have been rubber stamped and gone through. And that's problematic to me. So I want to know, regardless of who, who is at these six seats, that we have an idea of who these companies are, both currently established in Waco and new companies. I get that most, like Holmes was saying, most businesses that are large have problematic issues throughout their supply chain. But there are also companies like a Patagonia or a Warby Parker or a Dr. Bronner's that are committed to doing high levels of corporate responsibility. And I want to be curious, as we're recruiting and targeting businesses, that we're bringing businesses and partnering with businesses that are reflective of our council and our constituents' values. And I think Mars on some, like locally, Mars absolutely is, but Mars isn't a mom-and-pop shop. They're a $37 billion a year international company. And so I want to be looking at this from a variety of angles.
No, I hear what you're saying. I think that, that with the, the type of companies and industry that we deal with, you would find that we, if, when, when we do this and look, and look at that from that perspective, we will be unpleasantly made aware of a bunch of malpractices.
Yeah.
And again, this, this lawsuit was 2018, is that what?
No, this is a 2021 lawsuit.
Okay, 2020, 2018. And the entity you mentioned was 2009. We are righting wrongs currently from the 1600s and will be for a very long time.
Arguably very similar wrongs, the enslavement of African peoples.
Certainly. And as we walk through this process, we have, you know, what we can do in the position that we have now is do the best we can. And, and I hear your argument. I, I understand it more so than you think. However, we have a responsibility to this budget, to these people, and to our, the people who, who place us here, to make the best choices for them and their families.
Absolutely.
Their families, the people who elect us.
Absolutely.
And I want to jump in really quick. And I, I think we're going to have a lot of time for robust dialogue and debate on this. I want to keep questions focused because we do have a work session and some visitors here for that work session. So I know, I really, I hesitate to even jump in because I, I value the robust discussion.
But again, that's, that's proper stewardship, so.
So want to see if there's any other questions for Chris at this time. Not to stifle questions for Chris.
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thanks for joining us, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, our, we do have two ordinances on the agenda today. Ordinance 490 is a first reading that authorizes a developer participation agreement with Waco Construction that will allow the city of Waco to participate in the total costs for oversizing of improvements required by the city for Foxborough Addition Phase 9 for a total not to exceed $1.556 million. And then ordinance 491 is a second reading. If there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Mayor and council. Mayor and council, we also like to let you know that Councilmember Porter, Riden, Palmer have filed abidate of substantial interest for Resolution 2021-463 and Ordinance 2021-491. Resolution 2021-463 will have to be pulled from consent.
And I've also pulled Resolutions 460 from the consent agenda. Are there any other items to pull from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2021-455 through Resolution 2021-49, except for Resolutions 2021-463 and 460. And the next item on our agenda is our work session items, sorry, Bradley, will you please?
Keep rolling, keep rolling. No, we have Clint Peters joining us for discussion of the five public hearings that are on the agenda tonight. Clint, if you'll, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We do have the five public hearings tonight. Excuse me. The first one is dealing with our subdivision plat. This is the amended plat, amended preliminary plat at the Sunwest Village Edition. This is a developing, single-family residential subdivision out in the Highway 84 corridor. Sunwest Village has been developing since the early 2000s. You can see there on your screen, a big chunk of it's already developed with single-family homes. They've got the Harris Creek Baptist Church and then the Trailblazer Park. And then on the other side of the area that's been amended, there is a duplex development. And then further, closer to Old Arena and 84 is an area that's reserved for commercial and office development. So it's a rather large development that's been developing for about 20 years. Here's the most recent approved preliminary plat back in 2006. This was amended from the, the previous one in the late 90s, early 2000s to include Trailblazer Park. And then this is the new amended preliminary plat. If you remember recently, the, Tech Dot recently finished the Spiegelville 84 Overpass. And in part of that process, they acquired about five acres of land along the frontage of this subdivision. So they're having to adjust their preliminary plat to account for that. They also, with this amendment, they changed their lot size. Originally, they had planned for all 85-foot lot, size lots, 85-foot wide lots throughout the subdivision. And their new amended plat has a mix of different-sized lots, all still single-family, but it ranges from 85-foot down to 50-foot. And so it does increase the total lot count by about 60 lots for a total of 316 lots, which is about 3.09 units per acre. The other big change originally when this came through, we did not have detention requirements as part of our drainage. And with this new amended plat, they are accounting for the drainage on site with some detention ponds that would be incorporated as this develops out. You'll still have the main collector, which is State Line, State Line Drive that connects from Harris Creek and eventually will tie into Old Arena Road. Plan Commission did review this and recommends approval of the amended plat. The next public hearing, 451, is a special permit to Jason Mark Hall for a short-term rental type one in R1B zoning district at a property located at 3420 Lyle Avenue. This is at the, a single-family home at the corner of Lyle and Landon Branch. Type one is a short-term rental where the, that is owner-occupied, where the owner is present when the guests are staying there. And you can see on the map, this is a Lyle and then Landon Branch in the Landon Branch Neighborhood Association in Council District Five. It is a four-bedroom, single-family home in R1B zoning. You can see here, it is within 500 feet of a licensed STR2, but because it is an STR1, that, that buffer requirement does not apply to the STR1s. And you see, they, they got plenty of parking. They are proposing to rent two of the bedrooms out in the home. And so they are required four parking spaces and they have a two-car garage and then driveway for two, two spaces. No opposition on this one and Plan Commission recommended my vote 11-0 to approve it. The next special permit public hearing is 452.
Clint, can I, I apologize for interrupting you. Back on that one, and this would be one that would be allowed under our current ordinance that was recently amended, is that correct?
Correct. We, we left the STR type one as an available special permit.
Thank you.
That, that's a good point. So that, the STR2s, the effective date was June 15th. So the STR2s that you're seeing on this request came in before that effective date of that ordinance change. So this, this one is a type two at 5719 Fairview Drive, another single-family home. This is within the Mountain View neighborhood in Council District Five. Again, type two is a non-owner-occupied, single-family where one guest at a time stays on the property. You can see that the property, it's in a, a single-family neighborhood. You can see Mountain View Elementary School here and Park up to the north of Bishop and then Cobb's Drive here. And then the whole area is owned, single-family. We do have other, one other that's been permitted off of Lake Highlands, but outside the 500-feet buffer that's required. This is a four-bedroom home. The owners live out of state and propose that a local real estate agent operate the property. They do have enough parking to meet the parking requirements. And you can see the pictures of the homes here. Plan Commission, we did get, the Plan Commission, before the Plan Commission hearing, we did get three responses in opposition and then one in favor out of 33 notices. And the, based on that input, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the request by a vote of eight to three. However, we did just receive a petition in opposition yesterday. And you can see, this is a map that, that shows all the opposition within the 200-foot buffer area, which makes up 30% of that area. So it does trigger the supermajority requirement to approve for City Council.
Clint, do we have a copy of that petition by chance?
We should, we should have a copy of that provided to you or not. We can provide it at the sixth floor meeting.
Got the map on the phone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
And the next special permit, 453, this is a special permit for a contractor shop in C3 zoning, property located at 1029 North Oak Drive. This is a two-and-a-half-acre tract along North Loop, which is Business 77 in the, Council District One and the Carver Neighborhood Association. This is an existing developed property. It, for several decades, it was an operating contractor shop, but has been not in operation for several years. And the, the new, or the applicant is proposing to do a new contractor shop for a facility that does signage for gas stations for fuel canopies and dispenser doors and sticker materials. So basically, the way they operate is they get the inventory, comes to this site, they'll store it and stage it until it's needed to be installed at newly-built gas stations and then they'll use that. There is no construction on the site. They're proposing no construction on the site. It's mainly more of a staging area for their company, for the area, for the region.
Hey Clint, when you said storage on the site, does that mean inside the building or the yard as well?
So it's, it's got both. It's got a mix of buildings and I'll show you some of the pictures. And then it's got a yard. This kind of shows it better. So you can see, they do have some buildings on the site. This is the, the main office here. And then they got some storage building on it, but then they just got some open yard as well. This is the main office. And then you can see some of the buildings on the site. But it also has open yard. You can see it's a chain-linked fence. So some of our recommendations that Plan Commission also recommended was that site lighting must be directed towards the site and not the adjacent properties. And then any enclosed outside storage shall be screened and not more than 12 feet in height. And then where you had the chain-linked fence, that, that out for the yard, that, that needs to be added some screening along the fence. So either, you know, a site-proof fence or that material that can be added to chain length. We did get some, two letters of opposition at the Plan Commission hearing out of 29 notices. One is, let me go back to the zoning map. One was from a property owner that recently requested rezoning on this site here. This was all, that C3, the heavy commercial zoning, and they requested a mix of O2 and C2 for future mixed-use development. They had concerns about, long-term concerns about, you know, what contractor shops potentially could add to, you know, redeveloping area. And, and, you know, based on that input, staff would also like to add an additional condition that the permit be limited to just one year. So we can revisit it in a year to make sure it's not causing any issues with that corridor as it, as it redevelops. I do think with the improvements that they'll be putting in on the existing site with the screen, screening, and if it's operated well, I don't see it being a detriment to redevelopment on there. But we feel like the, the time period, adding that time period is prudent just to make sure it's not causing any issues.
No, I agree it's prudent because if we're looking at a potentially redeveloping an area, I know we had had many conversations about the Sealy property and that side and, you know, potentially making new residences and all kinds of things. So I think putting the condition in the special permit for one year would allow us to go back and evaluate without, you know, making any long-term commitments or boxing ourselves in a corner.
And the applicant is leasing this property and we let him know about this additional condition, their, their lease just runs a little bit longer than one year and they, they felt like it's an okay requirement to add.
Quick, when you say screening, what do you mean exactly?
So, so on this chain-length, chain-length fencing, that that either be site-proof, so either site-proof fencing.
What's a, what's site-proof? What would that entail? Like 10 or?
Yeah, I anticipate it's going to be some, where you can put that, that mesh inset into the chain length. We, we see that where you can't see through it, where, so they're not having to replace the fence.
Okay. I mean, I just, I want, because I just, to be honest, I don't love the look of this fence. And I think that, I don't know what a better alternative is. I'll, I'll think through that between now and, and when we go. But Clint, is, this is not in the downtown overlay, I'm guessing, with the barbed wire and?
No, sir.
Is there something, and pardon my ignorance, is there something that can prevent them from leaving stuff out of the storage sheds and making it, making the open yard look cluttered or?
Well, the, the way we have the conditions worded is if the, if there's any outside storage, it's got to be screened from public view. So if, if it's not, then they would be in violation of their.
And there's a highest requirement as well, that it doesn't, doesn't go over the fence or?
Right, if you can see it from the streets. This property has frontages both on Business 77, but there's also a, a street on the back, Hamilton, that backs up to some residential uses. So there'll be required for screening on the back as well.
Go ahead, I just ask, if you, and you, you know, I'll go with what you think is best, but I like the idea of having a, I, I understand why we need to screen the fence, but if there's a fence that is of a certain quality, that, you know, if this was your neighbor backing up to you, you'd want a fence of a certain quality, what would you be doing if we're granting a special permit? And I, I don't know what other council members think about that because I don't want to stifle business here. But I also, just, that's just a thought I had, so. It might be interesting to.
Explore options.
Explore options, maybe.
I mean, I'm sure there are multiple types of screening that could be presented and maybe should be recommended to be submitted to plan.
Sure. So we've, we've, we use this requirement quite a bit. The ordinance requires site-proof fencing. And, you know, we've approved different types from, you know, wood privacy fence to some sort of metal fence or masonry fence or, you know, even the chain link where you have the, the mesh that's put in there. You know, I, we have not talked to them about what their plan is to meet that requirement. You know, I was just anticipating with the, they're using the existing facility pretty much the way it is. and only having a one-year permit, that they would probably want to use, uh, some sort of, use the existing, existing fence that's there. Um, but, I mean, that's something we can have.
I think if it's a one-year permit, I think it's just something to continue to examine, just kind of our design standards, um, as we go forward. I mean, go back to the picture of the fence. I mean, I just, I, I know we, we want business to happen in Waco, um, and, and want to make it easy for business to happen, but I don't love the, the look of that fence when you're driving through the city. And I think that there could be higher design standards that we might want to start to implement. Um, particularly in a, a mixed-use neighborhood like this. Yeah, I think it'd be one thing if this was strictly far out, excuse me, in an industrial neighborhood. But given its proximity to residents, um, in, in a neighborhood, I just, I personally like the idea of, of beginning to evaluate design standards that might be higher than this. And maybe that's actually a, a future-genue item that we could have a discussion on is our downtown overlay and also, um, design standards for outside of our downtown overlay even. Like, do we want to continue to have fences like this through the middle of town, near residents? I don't. But if it's a one-year permit and, and, um, that's a future conversation, let's just make sure we have that.
Okay. Uh, and then our, our last, uh, public hearing, 454, is, uh, to consider a, a special permit to Mission Waco, uh, Mission World, Inc., for a transitional shelter type-two in, uh, O3 zoning district, a property located at 2322 and 2324 Gorman Avenue. Uh, this was in the Sanger Heights neighborhood in Council District Four. Uh, this is a, um, a, a single-family home that has a detached, uh, garage, uh, that has a garage apartment and office. Um, uh, Mission Waco is, uh, has plans to relocate their, uh, Mission, the, the, the manor house, uh, which is a residential male recovery program. Uh, it's been operating since 2000 and they'd like to expand that, uh, program to the existing, um, from their existing site that allows up to six tenants to, uh, the, uh, ability to have up to 11. And so this site, uh, accommodates that. Uh, as I mentioned, it is a recovery program, uh, that's about four to six months. Um, it's, um, 24 hours, um, supervision staff on-site. Uh, the participants are not allowed to have cars. Uh, typically, there's just three to four cars for staff and then they have a, a van, uh, that's used to, um, transport, um, tenants to, to different, uh, programs and, and job sites. Um, the site does have room for parking on five to six, uh, cars on-site. Um, Mission Waco did have, uh, did reach out to the Neighborhood Association, uh, and, and several of the neighbors before, uh, the Plan Commission, uh, hearing. And, uh, we did not have any responses back, uh, or, or comments at the Plan Commission hearing. Uh, we did get, uh, one, uh, response back after the Plan Commission hearing, uh, in opposition. Uh, and that was out of, uh, 34 notices. Um, here's pictures of the site. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is our zoning ordinance, uh, does require, uh, for transitional shelters not, to not be within 500 feet, uh, of a, a school, daycare, or other transitional shelter, uh, which this site, uh, meets. Um, there, there was a, a previous, uh, transitional shelter on the same block, uh, that was operated by Antioch Church, the Mercy House, but they're no longer operating that. So this would, uh, somewhat fill, uh, a, a, a need, uh, in that area for this type of use. Um, and the Plan Commission did recommend this by a vote of 11-0. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Clint.
Oh, one more thing. Uh, we, so we did put some conditions on this one as well. Uh, maximum of 11 adults, which is what they're asking for. We did put a condition on there that, uh, it needs to, uh, make sure it doesn't add any traffic congestion or parking. Uh, and then this one also is recommended for a period of one year, which is consistent, uh, with how we've treated these type of uses in the past. Uh, so we can revisit them and see how they're impacting the area. That's it now. Sorry about that.
Appreciate it, Clint. All right. Our next work session, Council and Mayor, we have, uh, Dr. Jackson Griggs joining us for a discussion of current operations and upcoming projects at Waco Family Medicine. He's running the gauntlet today. He was with, uh, McLennan County earlier, I understand. And so we're glad to have you, Jackson, here today and provide an annual update on your operations as well as some exciting upcoming projects.
Thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, all. And, uh, my sense is, is that we're pressed for time, so I'm going to move pretty quick. And, uh, and if you would like me to go into any detail, I'm great with you interrupting me, uh, so just, uh, just call me out. Uh, so, uh, I'll be sharing a lot of statistics, uh, and figures, uh, but I would, um, to echo the, the words of Paul Broder, who, uh, is a, uh, columnist, uh, he says, "Statistics are human beings with the tears wiped away." Um, every one of these stats represents an individual who's our neighbor, a mother, father, brother, sister, cousin, child. Uh, and so there are a lot of numbers, but these are, uh, people that have, um, stories and are, are beautiful human beings. Um, here's, uh, the approach today. Uh, I want to share a bit about our history and vision, the services that we offer, our physician training. I want to mention briefly how we're solving national problems locally. And then, uh, share with you, uh, some exciting news about our building for the future. Um, so there's a hundred-year history of, uh, the public investing in local health for the underserved, starting in 1924 is the first, I'm aware, where the city of Waco contracted with Providence Sanatorium. Public Health District took up that work of providing health care for those who were uninsured, um, and in poverty in '42. Um, and in the 1960s, there were some major shortages, uh, of the physician population. The average age of physician was 51. We had half the national, um, uh, average of physicians per population. So our density of physician population was half of what the rest of the country was. And, uh, the city, county leadership, medical society, and the hospitals worked together to form McLennan County Medical Education and Research Foundation. And, uh, and, and that foundation was developed specifically to address the shortage of physicians, to address inadequate services for the indigent population, inadequate acute care, and the financial burden of free care delivered in hospital ERs. Um, we have been, uh, living into, um, meeting, uh, and addressing all of those items over the past 50 years. And our vision today is to improve the wellness, and I, and I'm going to pause there because I'm going to come back to that word "wellness" that I think is so important, to improve the wellness of the underserved and vulnerable residents of the heart of Texas by providing effective access to high-quality, comprehensive, primary health care and by educating tomorrow's family physicians and health care professionals. So now let me share about our, our health care services. Uh, we, uh, have 14 sites where we're providing primary care. Four sites where we're providing oral health and dental care. At nine sites, we have an integrated mental health specialist who's working on primary care teams. We're performing maternity care, so prenatal care at nine sites. We're, um, performing hospital inpatient care at both Ascension Providence and Baylor Scott and Light Hillcrest. We have the single busiest pharmacy in, uh, the county. Have a full-service laboratory, uh, radiology department, including a CAT scan, ultrasound, plain film, bone density, and an eligibility department that helps, uh, our patients access, um, the, to really maximize the benefits that they can access. Uh, what you'll see here is a, a map of our sites. You see that they're, um, principally located in, uh, Waco City. Uh, we have one, uh, site in Belmead, one in McGregor, and one, uh, that you can't see here on this map that's in, uh, in Bell County in Temple. Um, you may recall this, uh, the Episcopal Health Foundation published this map that looked at, uh, life expectancy by geography. Um, and what we see here is a 15-year difference in life expectancy, um, at the time of birth, based on zip code. Um, and, uh, and, and when you look at our, where our sites have been placed, you see that they've been placed strategically, uh, to make the biggest impact first. Uh, so who, um, uh, who are our patients by income? Uh, we have, uh, last year, we saw 58,850 unduplicated patients. Just shy of 60,000 patients last year alone. And, uh, 84% of those patients fell below federal poverty level. Uh, 68% of our patient population are adults and 32% are children, so roughly two-thirds, one-third. Um, and among our adult population, uh, 80% report that they have at least one employer. And, and so I, I, I'm bringing, recalling that word "wellness." Our, our mission of wellness for 33,000 working adults, I believe, plays an imperative role in holding together the fabric of our local economy. If you're well, then you can work and you can develop, um, uh, some stability from a financial standpoint. Uh, by insurance, 37% of our patients are completely uninsured. 37% have Medicaid and you can see the distribution otherwise. We speak to that uninsured population. With, without primary care, uh, this population would suffer earlier death and a host of poorer health outcomes. It's been evidence that lack of health insurance is tied with adverse health outcomes and primary care can step into that space and, uh, ameliorate, um, a, a good bit of that risk. Uh, the reality is that, um, medical debt is the number-one cause of bankruptcy in the United States right now. And with adequate prevention and control of chronic disease, um, that medical debt can be kept, um, kept down. Uh, disease can be prevented, hospitalization, ER visits, rehospitalization can be avoided. And so, uh, primary care also helps to prevent the collapse of household, uh, financial security. We proudly serve a majority-minority population and work diligently to reduce the disparate health outcomes experienced by race groups, uh, both regionally and, uh, nationally. And you can see our, our distribution, uh, here. Incidentally, our, uh, for COVID, our vaccination, um, uh, distribution really mirrors, uh, this same, uh, pie chart fairly closely. So, uh, that's what I wanted to share with you about our services and I'll move on now to our physician training. Uh, we train, uh, 12 residents in each class of, of a three-year training program. So we have 36 residents and we have, uh, 51 approaching a 52-year history. Uh, we have three accredited fellowships, one in hospice palliative medicine, other in clinical informatics, and, uh, and then thirdly, in sports medicine. Uh, with regard to our family medicine residency training program, uh, over the past five years, we've had over 800 applicants per year applying to our, uh, our program. And that's for 12 positions, so it's, uh, easier to get into Yale than it is to the Waco Family Medicine Residency Program. So we have great talent, uh, cream of the crop, uh, who are applying, uh, to our program. Our national ranking as a program is in the top 2%. Um, and, uh, and we have graduated 464 family doctors, um, since starting our work. Um, in McLennan County, 81% of the family docs are graduates, uh, of ours. We have an unprecedented 100% 10-year board pass rate. Nobody's failed their boards in, in 10 years, which is, uh, stands out as the top in the state. And, uh, and we have rich contributions, uh, to research, um, in, in national publications. Um, the, the pie chart here just demonstrates that, um, among our applicants, 32% come from Texas, 68% from out-of-state. So just have a vision for, um, grabbing all the national talent, bringing it to Waco, training that talent aggressively. And then, you know, we enjoy watching a lot of our graduates stay and practice locally. Um, so we have a very, very strong primary care workforce, uh, in Waco, no small part because of the legacy of the Waco Family Medicine, um, program. So, uh, we're, we're proud of the way we're solving some national problems locally. Um, it's, uh, certainly, um, no new news to, to anyone here that, uh, we have an extraordinarily expensive health care system in the United States, around $4 trillion. That's 18% of our gross domestic product. $11,600 per person per year is spent in the United States on health care. Um, and we have a really good sick care system. Um, I mean, you go to the hospital and you get pretty good care in the United States. But our population health, um, across the country, um, is inequitable and i- it is not good compared with other developed countries. Some part of that is because we only spend 5% on primary care in the United States. In most other developed nations, um, uh, it's more like 12 to 14% of the overall health care expenditure is, is spent on primary care. So to some extent, we are emphasizing some of the wrong things in American health care. Um, we, we have a vision to move the, uh, population from sick care increasingly towards health, which is why we've been really innovative as an organization. We have a, a wellness center that trains folks to become more active in their everyday life. Uh, we have a teaching ki- kitchen inside that wellness center that teaches folks to cook healthy foods. A, a medical legal partnership that, uh, helps individuals to solve, um, health-harming legal needs in collaboration with Greater Waco Legal Services. We have a prescription produce program that identifies individuals who would benefit from, uh, a half-bushel box of produce. And we've collaborated with, uh, the farm, uh, the World Hunger Farm, uh, locally to provide that produce. Um, we train, um, uh, community members in urban gardening. We have a, an award-winning integrated behavioral health program that won Texas Academy of Family Physicians Innovation Award and bringing primary care, in, bringing, uh, mental health experts into the primary care sitting, setting. And we have, uh, long-term participants in Reach Out &amp; Read that's helped, um, improve childhood literacy. And then kind of the newest innovation on the block for us is telehealth in schools. We have identified, uh, 10 key campuses and we are addressing physical and mental health services for children. Um, uh, in, in August, we'll be active at, um, all 10 of these campuses. Um, and, uh, and, and, uh, we, we feel like if we can keep children in schools and keep parents, um, from having to skip work, then, uh, the, the benefits abound, um, in, in terms of, uh, being able to, to take care of kids in the school setting. So what's ahead for us? Um, our busiest clinical operation, residency training site and administrative headquarters is located right here at, uh, the Colcord 18th. Um, right off it, the address is 1600 Providence Drive. It was built in 1982 and, uh, and, and we have frankly outgrown our current space. Um, we, uh, our organization has grown exponentially since the time that was built, from one site to 14 sites, 16,000 patients to almost 60,000 patients. Um, our, uh, technology has grown, administration billing, eligibility, wellness facilities have all grown. Um, and our current building is unable to be expanded or renovated to meet new needs. Um, we have had an architect look at our building and they've said there's just no way to add-on to the building, um, uh, that we, we currently have already sort of Frankenstein'd together, uh, since '82. Um, our current clinics aren't ADA compliant and we're not able to modify, modify them. And if we're going to stay at the tip of the spear in terms of training excellence, our facilities have got to keep up with contemporary primary care, which is multidisciplinary, addressing social and mental health needs. And that requires space and space that we don't have. So, uh, our, our footprint here, um, uh, is, uh, you can see, um, if you'll, if you'll in your imagination kind of exclude the Brook Oak Senior living here, we own, uh, this space and, uh, and we're situated right now on this space right here. Um, uh, but to, to anchor the organization and to provide patient care for the next 50 years, we've modeled out a building that's about 140,000 square feet and will cost around $51 million. We'll more than double our clinical space. We'll create, uh, a marketplace on the first floor where local partners in health, social services, employment can have, uh, access to our patients so that, uh, we can offer them wraparound services that impact health outside of, uh, clinical care within four walls. Um, a good question might be, how are you going to afford $51 million building? Well, part of that's why I'm here today, to, to approach the city. Um, we, we do have a stacked approach. Um, our Waco Family Medicine Foundation has, um, has already committed 7.5 million. Uh, we have, uh, 1.5 million that we've submitted for, uh, federal. million. We have one and a half million that we've submitted for a federal grant from HERSA. We're hoping that, that over the next three years, additional grant opportunities from HERSA will come to us. New market tax credits are a way to build equity through tax credits that are issued through community development entity by U.S. Department of Treasury. We think that we're good candidates for, for that. We're, we have a, an amazing capital campaign team that has assembled and we're talking through strategies right now. We're anticipating individual philanthropy and foundational philanthropy to be key as well. But my hope was that the council will, will be able to identify whether it's in the American Rescue Plan Act funding or otherwise, two-point-five million dollars for this project. Delighted to say that made the same pitch this morning to the commissioners and they agreed that, that, that motion passed this morning to fund us at that amount. And so the hope has been, when I initially approached the city manager, that, that there could be symmetry between city and county. So, I'm, I'm asking today for, for the two-point-five million for the building is, in addition to the annual stipend that the city has been so faithful in, in providing to Waco Family Medicine for, for decades. Our, our vision for the new facility on Colcord is to create a clinical home that warmly welcomes all people in the heart of Texas to support patient-centered healthcare and wellness services and to advance education and research in primary care. Not only will the facility advance center mission, it will also provide a workplace for three-hundred-and-fifty employees. And, and the median wage of those employees is forty-two thousand dollars a year. So, I, I think this is important from an economic development in this neighborhood as well. And, and a last slide here with some concluding points. We're serving one in five individuals each year in McLennan County. It's important to remember that Texas is the least insured state in the nation. McLennan County is one of the largest counties in Texas without a local taxing hospital or healthcare district, which makes funding always challenging for us. Eighty-one percent of our annual revenues come from patient care, but the three percent of our budget that comes each year from city and county is key. We are stretched in our budget every year to, to make budget. And, and this year, I've submitted a request for one-point-one-nine million from the city and, and seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand from the county. Each year, we increase that by the small, it's one-point-five percent inflationary rate for medical services from the U.S. Department of Labor. And, and, and this is an unusually low year of inflation.
Dr. Griggs?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you repeat the, the city-county numbers again for me, please?
Absolutely. So, we make, we make a, each year we make a request to city and county. This year, the request for the city is one-point-one-nine million and seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand from the county. So...
Is that reflective of the, the nature of where your patients actually reside?
The bulk of the patients, you know, I have not, this is, it goes back, we have a graphic that we share in the letter that we submit to city and county that, that tracks the years and, and the amounts. And it would probably be ten years ago when, that's illustrated on that graphic, the, the stipends go back further than that, but that's what I recall. And, and I haven't seen any major changes in the amounts outside of the eleven-fifteen waiver not being available anymore and that having about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar impact on us two years ago. But outside of that impact, there has not been a major change that, that I'm aware of in terms of the city and county. But, but your larger question, which is how did that originally get figured out? I, I'd have to go back and run the numbers. I don't know. But, but my guess is that approximates those who are incorporated in City of Waco and those outside. I mean, very roughly, it seems to match.
Thank you.
The National Academy of Medicine has recently come up with a very strong statement saying that primary care is a common good. It's unique among healthcare services because it impacts health equity and population health. And so everyone should have access to it. And, and we've been doing this together with city and county and community for fifty years. And, and I'm excited about the next fifty. And this, this ask has to do with really building infrastructure from that. And of course, if we've learned anything from the pandemic, it's that there are no mavericks. We're all interconnected and, and we can all do this together. So thank you all so much for the time. Appreciate it and I'd be delighted to answer questions.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Griggs?
Dr. Griggs, I will say first and foremost, thank you so much for your presentation. It is an honor to have you here today and the work that Waco Family Medicine does within our city and our community. I proudly say over and over, I am a patient of Waco Family Medicine and I believe in the services that you provide to our city. Primary dental, mental, the maternity care pharmacy, the list goes on and on and on and on. To even be a part of the conversations of your race equity team, that we are seeing the life expectancy difference of fifteen years from our residents that live in East Waco compared to West Waco is breathtaking and not in a good way. But also to see the amount of people of color that the, that the clinic sees and the hospitals sees on an annual basis. I mean, sixty percent of your patient care is Hispanic, which is near and dear to me. And, and, and to see your staff, not just at the front desk, but nurses and physicians and pharmacists are reflective of the community that it serves. It's very encouraging to see that. I am grateful for the work that you do with our health district, even serving, you personally serving as our vice chair for our health district. It is truly, just makes us stronger. And, and, and I, I even look for how we can strengthen our ties between the health district and Waco Family Medicine as you move with this new capital improvement budget. I hope that I know staff will do our due diligence, is due diligence to see how we can help you with this capital improvement project. And, and I, and I'm grateful to be a part of that. We are grateful to support Waco Family Medicine through the money that we give annually. That's how much we believe in you and the organization and are excited for the next fifty years of this organization. And quick question, would this be the largest capital improvement project in District Four, once, once this goes through?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to fact-check it, but I would off the top of my head, Councilmember, I'd say yes.
Well, I'm jealous.
Well, while we're talking about District Four, it is such a pleasure to have Waco Family Medicine centered in the heart of D4. Y'all are such great partners to all of our neighborhoods, but particularly to Sanger Heights and to Brook Oaks. Your staff is consistently coming to the meetings. There's been so much excitement about the urban garden now right on the corner in Sanger Heights. And the opportunity that affords for folks to learn how to harvest their own food in their backyard and know when things are in season. And really excited about the partnership with Brook Oaks and Waco Family Medicine and foundations to increase that public education piece. It has been a joy and a pleasure to co-chair the health response team with you. I've had so many hours spent the last eight months on the phone with you and in meetings. And I just respect the work that you and your team are doing without question and without reserve. And I'm excited to see where Bradley and Paul and Nick can find the extra two-point-five million dollars in our couch cushions. But this absolutely has my full support.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Sabido, Councilmember Palmer. Appreciate all of you.
I do have a question. You know, this is, this has been a, a foundational institution in our community for a very long time. And when I first got elected, I was invited by former Mayor Duncan and you to come and tour the facility and look at where we were with the, from the perspective of where you wanted to go. As Mayor Pro Tim Sabido was mentioning, the reflective staff of looking at its community. I, we, we had a conversation then in twenty-eighteen about the residency program. And I know that this, if this is the most sought, one of the most sought-after residency programs within the country. I'm curious, out of the eight hundred applications, you know, what percentage do you think were recruited from HBCUs and/or recruited intentionally so that the physicians could reflect our community?
That's an outstanding question and one that we have really begun to spend, I think, renewed energy to address. We, out of the, really the birth of the organization occurred during a time of our whole country rethinking race issues and, and the civil rights movement was such a pivotal time for us. And it's the, it's the really starting place of the community health center movement that was started in Mississippi Delta by a civil rights activist. And we have, I think, since our beginning, thought about our work as equity work in terms of caring for patients. What, you bring such an important point, Councilmember Bearfield, and that is that we need physicians who reflect the demographics of the patients that they serve. We know that health outcomes in terms of screening and adherence to plan are better when there's concordance between clinician, race, ethnicity, gender, and patient race, ethnicity, and gender. So we began to, to think about strategies to improve our residency diversity, in large part because we recruit our faculty from our residents, not infrequently. And our, our clinical group that are at our fourteen sites are recruited also from our residency group. So, we know that if we've, if we're going to have diverse clinicians, diverse family doctors, both on our faculty and in the community, we're going to have to be aggressive about recruiting. So, we, let's see. This past year was pandemic. The year before was the first year that we visited Mahari University in order to set up a fair. We developed some relationships there and we, with the Family Medicine Interest Group that, that then shared the, our, our openness to being helpful in whatever way to Mahari applicants, not just in family medicine, but in other specialties as well. We provided mock interviews. So those resident, those medical students would get on the phone with our faculty and we would, and we would give them a mock interview in order to coach them on, on interview skills, which improved, one, it built rapport with our organization so we'd have a better chance of recruiting. And, and, and two, so it helped the med students to achieve their first choice in residency matching. We have, this year, we doubled the interview numbers of African-American residents, which is still low. I, I would, I think the starting point is to recognize how, how few graduates there are that are African-American, which tells its own story of, of white advantage and the legacy. So there are very few...
From PWI Medical Schools or HBCUs?
I'm talking about across the country, yeah. But, but then from, from that group, we have, we have started a strategic approach, you know, vis-à-vis visiting Mahari. We're, also have plans to visit other sites. But the, the, I think the take a point is that we're, is that we're, we're working on it. We have, have historically had a pretty good representation among, among Latino residents. But this year, we have one African-American resident in, in our first year class who's, who's exceptional in every way. We're thrilled that, that she chose us. And, and our hope is that we can grow from there to have additional African-American residents.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that, as the demographics clearly shown that your, our Latina, Latin, Latinx patients and African-American patients make up the majority of the base. So I'm hopeful that Mahari and Howard and the pharmacy school at Xavier and the one at TSU will be represented along the lines in the future. So I look forward to that, that growth and continued development and commitment to the intentional work, because it's not just going to happen on its own.
No, absolutely.
We are going to have to make effort to do it.
I agree.
You, you mentioned the, you said fifty million?
Yes, fifty-one is the current, yep.
And so right now, you said, I was trying to write down the, the dollars that were committed so we can figure, you know. So County gave you two-five this morning. I was on the call, heard seven-point-five, seven-point-five and then one-point-five.
So seven-point-five from the, is committed from the foundation. Well, one-point-one from HERSA is what we've applied to. And we, so our operating entity, the, the center, I'm not talking about the foundation, but the center has six months of, of operating reserves, which is roughly thirty million dollars. So we can leverage that to, to debt finance a significant portion of the building. Our hope is though, that we can start with as much equity as possible so that we don't chew up, you know, our revenue with, with interest expense and then, and not be able to do more good. So this is really about how much good can we do as opposed to paying the, the bank an interest check?
I hear you. And I will, I will make comment. You mentioned at, at the foundation of, of this entity, what, what is now Waco Family Medicine in the crisis of, of the shift in our country. Fannie Lou Hamer was sick and tired of being sick and tired and had to make a full intent of what it looked like to make better wellness pathways, as you mentioned, for, for our community. And, you know, I know that that's one of the things I, I'll be looking forward to working with our staff and probably you in the future on what it is to look at race as a part of the public health, health crisis and how we specifically speak to that. So I think that, that entities like Waco Family Medicine have a particular role and position as a community, community hospitals, family centers, wellness centers. So I know that the work with non-traditional medicine is key. And so I'm, I applaud you all for those efforts and, and look forward to how that advances.
Thank you for your comments and I appreciate the endorsement. I'm looking forward to working more on this together, for sure.
Dr. Griggs, I'll just echo everybody else's well wishes here. I liked your quote about facts are numbers with tears, they're wiped away, right? I love those are tears of joy or tears of sorrow. Probably a little bit of both, I don't know. But anyway, you're filling a genuine need here in the, in the city and I appreciate everything, everything that you're doing, particularly over the, the last year when you took a very distinct leadership role in our recovery out of COVID. And I don't even think for that a thousand times, but I just want to do it publicly here. Your, your vision and your leadership are very important to, to this council. I'm excited about your, your vision on this capital improvement project and hope we can help out.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate those comments. Appreciate everyone so much, yeah.
Dr. Griggs, I'd like to echo my fellow council members' praise and expressions of appreciation for all the good work that you do and that, that's done by your staff and faculty at Waco Family Medicine. I realize that, you know, there's probably a strong preference on your board to remain on the locate, in the location where you are right now in terms of address. I, I assume that the now partially demolished Hillcrest Tower was considered, but probably rejected for various factors. When you're, you know, having just seen kind of a few sketches of what you're planning and what your board's planning here, is there room for, going to be room for future expansion on the site in that? I assume obviously it'll be ADA compliant and all kinds of wonderfully state-of-the-art technology in there. But are you seeing any room for future growth at that site as you build and plan for the future?
Yes. And in fact, on the slides that you have seen, there's a building there that it may be labeled as, you know, a partnership or, or, there's an ancillary small building right next to the Madison Cooper Community Clinic. And, and that's a sort of a placeholder for future expansion, for additional partnerships or needs for the center. That's the, the fifteen year potential building site. Now, that, that would trigger the need for a parking garage in the building at the main site that we've envisioned. We're right up against that threshold. We're trying not to cross it so that we can avoid having a parking garage on that site. But if we were to have additional square footage, then it, it would likely trigger that need. So, we're not, we're not wanting to... So we're not, we're not wanting to build more than what is needed right now. Ample space for us to grow into without there being surplus, so. And, and we, we looked at moving near the hospitals for the residency trainings benefit, and we surveyed patients. This has been, it was six years ago when we were initially having this conversation. That's really when the vision began. And, and, and half our patients said, "We, we want you to stay here, we won't travel with you if you move out to those remote locations." So that really made it certain in our hearts that we were going to, we were going to stay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Griggs. It's so good to see you, and again, so appreciate all that you've done for our community in this last year. I fully embrace this historical partnership between our institutions and look forward to dialoguing further about what we can do to be supportive of this project. I think that it meets a critical need in our community, and that's the reason for our partnership, full stop. I did want to highlight a couple of things that, this is not why we should be partners or support this, but because it hasn't been said yet, I think it's worth noting, I think that the 300 jobs that you have on this site are worth noting. I mean, that is an economic development driver for an ecosystem. The coffee shops across the street, the diners nearby, these things benefit from the economic development that you do. And I think even the, the component of 80% of your patients, a staggering number of patients frankly, work or gainfully employed, is something to note as well. Like you said, that economic development factor. And again, that's not the reason for this partnership, but I think it's worth highlighting. A couple of things that I would just like to, one is, is maybe an encouragement to you, Dr. Griggs, and we've talked about this before. I, I think I'd be curious to know, and this is separate from the discussion on our contribution, but as other municipality, I'm sure there's residents of other municipalities in McLennan County who take advantage of the services with which you provide, and as they are getting ARP money, I think it'd be worth, and you're pursuing a variety of funding, I would encourage reaching out to those, and I'm sure you have the data, just based on your addresses of your patients, to really make sure that the, the, the funding is being equitably sought after. And then, and then the other thought I had too, and this is maybe more for a city conversation, but when I see a capital investment like this in a neighborhood and also hear the vision for all the interesting stuff happening right here, I think, you know, really doing some master planning, placemaking, hey, what are we doing around here to leverage this opportunity to, to really grow the economy in the, in these corridors is worthwhile. So I think maybe continue, maybe future gender or discussion with city staff about how we can partner well on that, as, as such a staggering capital improvement is going into this community. Again, not the most, neither of those things are the most important piece of what you set to date. Thankful for your partnership and look forward to moving forward together, but just a couple of things to, to bear in mind.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here, Dr. Griggs. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
And with that, we are going to take a, we're going to try for a five-minute break because we're running a little bit behind, so that means hustle. So we'll, we'll give it, we'll give it a good five minutes. We'll, we'll try to kick it back off at 3:45 after a break.
Sure.
Council meeting, and I believe we have a discussion of an update on Strategic Housing Plan and Study.
Lot going on. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
That's what happens when we break in the middle.
I'm going to go ahead and ask our director, our Inter Director of Community Services to come to the table, as well as Galen Price, who serves in a variety of roles from the City Manager's Office at the moment. They'll be joining us to discuss the interim update on the Strategic Housing Plan, and Ray Nisha, you want to provide an intro?
Excuse me, City Manager Ford, before, and beg your pardon, Ray Nisha, I did, I neglected to do something earlier and wanted to be sure that I did it. When we were discussing Resolutions 464 and 645 concerning the acquisition of the Doris Miller Y and the lease agreements with Quinn, Inc., I, I said staff, and I needed to be very particular in acknowledging Galen Price, who led these initiatives and walked this process through, and I know the work that went into the negotiations with that, and it would, I don't want it lost on you that I appreciate the work that you've dedicated to this particular project and everything that you've done and continue to do for District One and that, that program and entity, so thank you. And also working with us in transition of, from the Bledsoe Miller to the Doris Miller facility, reimagining what the Bledsoe Miller will look like as a STEAM center for District One. So these are all things that, that, you know, you added to those efforts, you, Deputy City Manager Emerson, City Manager, all of you all have done such a great job, but I did want to thank you for the work that you've done.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Today, our housing consultants, Mullen and Laurigan, will provide an interim update to the house, Strategic Housing Plan. This update will be centered around the groundwork performed thus far to include community engagement process, reports provided by the city departments, and also recommendations moving forward. And now I'll turn it over to Christine Dierk with Mullen and Laurigan.
She's on mute.
Yeah, I didn't, it didn't go. Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for giving us time during today's presentation, during today's session for us to present some of our key findings to date on our work for the Waco Strategic Housing Plan. My name is Christine Dierk, and I am a Housing and Community Development Specialist with Mullen and Laurigan Associates, the consulting firm contracted by the city, and joined today by colleagues Jessica Lers and Principal Marjorie Willow. We are going to turn our cameras off for the presentation, but we'll turn them back on for the Q and A session. An overview of the agenda for today is to provide the overview, the outreach conducted so far, present the results of our initial analysis, list the steps that we'll take next, and have time for questions. A project team comprised of city staff and project consultants, M and L, as well as Highland Planning, was created to be responsible for the public engagement plan. The engagement process was phased, and this document provides a summary of the engagement activities conducted during Phase One. There were five one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders, including the Heart of Texas Agency and Disability Resource Center, the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition, Prosper Waco, Grassroots Waco, and the Central Texas African-American Chamber of Commerce. There were three virtual stakeholder meetings, one of which was conducted in Spanish, and two virtual public meetings, one of which was held in Spanish. Over the span of three months, over 50 participants from across the city were directly engaged in these activities. And the issues that stakeholders and the public most frequently mention include a lack of a housing supply, low-quality affordable housing stock, the impact of short-term rentals on housing costs, the need for additional rental housing, and the need for affordable housing options that serve homeless youth and young adults. There were also concerns mentioned about the recent economic boom that has attracted an influx of higher-income tourists and new residents, which has increased the demand for housing and driven up market prices. Community members also expressed that it's difficult to develop new affordable housing because of both the cost of land and construction. Now we'll move into the initial key findings on the quantitative section. Before we dive into the quantitative portions of the presentation, we want to emphasize that this is an interim presentation that highlights the key findings of the analysis we've completed to date. Additional analysis has been done and a few tasks remain to be completed. We also want to note that the data used in the study is largely from 2019 unless otherwise noted, and while it is already the second half of 2021, the Census Bureau has not yet released the 2020 American Community Survey data, and they will not release the more reliable five-year estimate until the middle of December of this year. First, we'll address the factors impacting housing affordability. The factors impacting housing affordability in Waco are like two sides of a coin, and on one side, there's economic growth and primarily low-wage occupations, and the other side is a housing mismatch. As we go through the presentation, we will describe both sides of the coin. Housing is considered affordable if a household spends no more than 30% of their household income on housing costs, and that's true regardless of the income tier of the household, though there is a need for us to focus more on households that are not higher-income households because they have less money available to meet their housing needs, healthcare, transportation, groceries, childcare, and other expenses. Affordable housing can be publicly subsidized or market rate. Publicly subsidized examples include a housing choice voucher or like a low-income housing tax credit unit. In this study, the focus is going to be on households earning up to 120% of the area median income where possible, with a closer look at households in the 0% to 80% AMI income tiers. Households with incomes up to 80% AMI are called low and moderate income, and when market rate units are affordable to low and moderate income households, then we call that unit naturally occurring affordable housing. So who is considered low and moderate income in the city of Waco? HUD's low-to-moderate income definition is based on household size. This graphic shows the median wages for a variety of occupations. The police officer and the teacher salaries were provided by the city, and the cashier and construction laborers data was taken from the Labor Market and Career Information Department of the Texas Workforce Commission. The teacher and police officer salaries place a single wage earner living alone well above 100% AMI. So teachers come in at 136% AMI and police officers at 140% of AMI when they live alone. Wage earners living alone who are cashiers or construction laborers are considered low to moderate income. Cashiers have median earnings of $23,543, which places them at 51% of the area median income. Construction laborers earning a little over $33,000 a year are placed at 72% of AMI. The first side of the coin that we're going to look at will be the economic factors impacting housing affordability in Waco. If we consider historical data from 2015 to 2019, there was a net gain of over 8,000 jobs in Waco, of which only 30% had an annual salary above 80% of AMI for a household of four. And so for reference, 80% of AMI for a household of four in 2019 was $51,600, and for a single-person household, it was $36,150. Looking forward to 2028 and using the Heart of Texas Region's top occupation projection data, the top 10 occupations projected by employment are largely low-paying. So recall that AMI is based on household size. Only one of the 10 occupations, registered nurses, have an annual, an average annual salary that's above 80% AMI for a household of four. And only two occupations, the registered nurses and the heavy and tractor-trailer truck drivers, have wages above 80% AMI for a household of one. Excuse me. Now we'll look at the other side of the coin, housing factors that impact affordability. Part of the analysis involved classifying each housing unit by tenure into an affordability tier. So each unit affordable to a 0% to 30% AMI household, a 31% to 50%, 51% to 80%, and so forth. The most recent dataset to do this analysis is from 2019, and it's the only publicly available data source that is available to us. We also needed to do this analysis at the county level to get at the city's desired income tier breakpoints up to 120% AMI. And lastly, it's not possible to isolate the city from the county in this dataset. As of 2019, much of the housing stock in the county is considered naturally occurring affordable housing. Within the rental market, 85% of the housing stock was affordable to households with incomes under 80% AMI, with the largest number of units affordable to households with incomes in the 51% to 80% tier. Within the sales market, 71% of the owner market was affordable under 80% AMI, with the largest number of units affordable to households with incomes between 31% and 80% of area median income. However, let us be clear that we are not saying that there's not an affordability issue in Waco, because data reveal that many households are without housing that is affordable to them. The issue is more nuanced than simply a lack of units that have price points that are affordable to low and moderate income households. There are these three key issues impacting affordability. First, housing rehabilitation is needed. Stakeholders reported that much of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock needs significant and costly rehab. This means that while there is a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing, it is only really affordable to those with higher incomes who can afford to take on the financial burden of rehabbing a unit after they purchase it. In the case of the rental market, the housing may be substandard. Second, there's a lack of diversity in the housing stock, both in terms of the number of bedrooms and unit types available. And third, there is a housing mismatch in which thousands of households live in units that do not align with their income. So what this means is a household with an income of 30% AMI may be living in a 50% AMI unit and is therefore cost burdened. But it could also mean that an 80% AMI household lives in a 50% AMI unit. We found this mismatch to be a significant contributing factor to housing affordability As stated, there's a lack of diversity in housing types and sizes. So for example, over 60% of the housing stock is comprised of single-family units, and 54% of the inventory has three or more bedrooms. The reason it's important to highlight this is that not all households need, want, or can afford a single-family, three-bedroom unit to rent or buy. Young professionals may wish to live alone, and they only need a studio or a one-bedroom apartment. Older persons may wish to downsize to smaller units that require less maintenance. And these are just two household types used to illustrate that different types of households have different needs and different preferences, and that there's a need for greater diversity in the housing stock to meet these needs and preferences. And when units must buy, when households must buy or rent units that are larger than they need because there's a lack of inventory, this contributes to the housing affordability issue because a greater percentage of their income will go toward housing costs for a wrong-sized unit. Earlier, we defined a housing mismatch as occurring when a household resides in a unit that is not affordable in their income tier. The mismatch can happen when households live in more costly units than are supported by their incomes, or because the households rent or buy downmarket. The full report contains a series of bar charts that illustrate these residency patterns by tenure, as well as provides the distribution of household incomes as compared to the distribution of unit affordability. In this presentation, we are only going over the highlights of this in-depth analysis. In the rental market, there is a shortage of both the most affordable units and the more costly ones. For each unit affordable to the lowest-income households below 30%, with incomes below 30% AMI, there are about four households that need the unit. For each unit affordable to households with incomes over 100% AMI, there are five households that can afford the unit. And so these higher-income renters need housing, and they're forced to rent downmarket even if they want something that's a little bit bigger, a little nicer, has more amenities, just because there is a lack of inventory for the households' higher incomes. Lower-income households- Lower-income households, therefore, must compete not only with each other for the more affordable units of which there aren't enough, but they must also compete with the higher-income households that need to find housing downmarket. In the sales market, there is a shortage of units that are affordable only to those with incomes over one hundred percent AMI, and many units affordable to those with incomes from zero to fifty percent AMI. For each unit affordable to households with incomes above one hundred percent AMI, there are three households that need the unit. And for households, for each household with income between zero to fifty percent AMI, there are about three units of inventory, although we found that the units are largely not occupied by zero to fifty percent AMI households. As a result of higher-income households who are forced to buy downmarket, this contributes to the shortage of units affordable to the lowest-income owners. The result of the mismatch and inadequate inventory across all income tiers is that a significant proportion of households do not have affordable housing. This graph uses slightly different income tiers to understand housing affordability. We're concerned with each household having housing that is affordable to them, even if it means spending less than thirty percent of their income on housing. Therefore, we use cumulative income tiers of zero to thirty, zero to fifty, zero to sixty, zero to eighty, and so forth. Another way to think about this is that a household with income between thirty-one to fifty percent AMI can afford all of the units in that tier and the units that are affordable to the tier below, the zero to thirties. When we consider these cumulative income tiers, we see that as income increases, fewer and fewer renter households are without affordable housing. Once income is between eighty and one hundred percent of the area median income, there is no shortage of units, as shown by the lack of a light gray bar above the zero line. The gray bar that dips below the zero line indicates that there is a surplus of units once incomes are above one hundred percent AMI within the rental market. Owners never reach the same point as renters of having enough or even a surplus of units, though this is less of a concern among higher-income households, because even if they spend more than thirty percent on housing, they are more likely to have enough resources left over to pay for their other necessities, transportation, healthcare, childcare, groceries, et cetera, just because they have higher incomes. To summarize our findings among the renter households in Waco, as income increases, households tend to reside in more expensive units, but only to a point. Renters above one hundred percent AMI still tend to live downmarket in the thirty to eighty percent units. Cost burden falls off above eighty percent AMI and largely disappears by one hundred percent AMI. Black households tend to have lower incomes, live in less costly units, and are frequently cost-burdened. Hispanic households tend to have lower incomes, but their pattern of cost burden mirrors that of non-Hispanics. Cost burden among the elderly falls off above about sixty percent AMI. People with disabilities tend to have lower incomes, and cost burden among people with disabilities tends to fall off above ninety percent AMI. Single mothers are among the lowest income and the highest cost burden, even though they reside in the least costly units, and in general, college student households do not reside in the most affordable units. To summarize our findings among owner households, owners tend to have higher incomes than renters and reside in units that are affordable to households under eighty percent AMI, even as their income increases above one hundred percent AMI, which contributes to the mismatch. Black homeowners tend to be lower income, are more likely to be cost-burdened, and reside in more affordable units. Hispanic households' pattern of cost burden mirrors that of non-Hispanics. There's no clear difference in residency patterns among elderly or disabled homeowner households compared with their counterparts, and single mothers and other households with children are less likely to experience cost burden once their incomes are above eighty percent AMI. We understand that short-term rentals have become a topic of conversation in recent months and years as the number of STRs has increased. Data provided by Planning Services Department shows a total of two hundred thirty-eight active STRs in Waco as of May twelfth of this year. This represents zero point four nine percent, or less than half of a percent, of the total occupied housing units in the city of Waco. These two hundred thirty-eight STRs are shown in that small sliver in the pie chart at left, and the pie chart at right illustrates the composition by STR type of the two hundred thirty STRs. The light green portion are the STR type twos, and the dark green portion represent the STR type threes.
Hey Christine, real quick, before you go on, the two hundred and thirty-eight are reflective of those that are licensed in the city of Waco, correct?
That's correct.
So there could be other ones that aren't licensed but are still operating within the city?
That's right. These are, these two hundred thirty-eight were the list provided to us by the city.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Christine, before you go on, I did have a question in reference to the cost burden analysis for the rentals and the owners. As they were broken out, you, you mentioned the difference in blacks and Latinos, and I was curious if you knew why, and you enter, and, and the other part is, you said the cost burden on Hispanics were reflective of those that are non-Hispanics. Are you talking, tell me what you mean, because Hispanic is an ethnicity, not a race. So what do you mean?
So in this, this gets really into the weeds to talk about how these classifications are done. To answer the first question about why these disparities may exist, I would point to, to history. If we go back in time, all the way to the days of redlining and disinvestment neighborhoods.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted you to say it out loud.
Yeah, so, so, and for those that don't know, I'll, I'll say the rest of it. So if you actually take those old redlining maps and lay them on top of today's modern cities, it is quite common for the old redlining areas to line up with, you know, neighborhoods in cities that struggle a little bit more where there's been, you know, long-term disinvestment.
Thank you for the clarity.
Mayor Protem, uh, Mayor Protem Spito, wanted to circle back on your comment about unlicensed STRs, because it's a question we get as staff members often, and probably y'all as council too, which is how does the city go try and reduce that number of unlicensed? And just a reminder, we do have the third-party service that scrapes the internet so that we're monitoring all the major sites and enforcing our rules fairly across that industry to ensure that folks are applying for those permits.
Right, thank you, thank you for that clarification, sir.
So let's go back to the STRs. It's our understanding that it's really the type two and the type three STRs that are discussed most because the owner is permitted to vacate the property while the guests rent the unit. And so we mapped the locations of types two and three, and it became clear that these types of STRs tend to be located near community assets such as tourist attractions and Baylor University. So we did an analysis to determine which census tracts have a disproportionate number of STR types two and three, given the number of units, total housing units that are in that census tract. So census tracts in which the percentage of occupied housing stock that is type two or three STR exceeds the citywide average were classified into just what we called an STR study area, which is shown in that orangey gold outline on the map. There are a total of nine census tracts that meet this criterion. So many of the STR units in that study area, there are one hundred twenty-one in total across the nine census tracts, are affordable to households with incomes between zero to fifty percent AMI. But we also found that housing units in the study area in general are more affordable than in the city overall. So one would expect that many of the STRs are a part of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock. So we did a comparison of the affordability of the STRs in the study area to the overall housing stock in the studying area, and found that there is very little difference in composition between the STRs and, and the whole region. And so STRs are just part of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock in the, in the study area.
Can you say that again, please, for me?
Wouldn't the last part about the composition?
Or maybe even just, Hector, I don't want to interrupt, but extrapolate, like, what does that mean when you say, does that mean it's a nominal impact? Does that mean, based on data, does that mean it's a significant, like, what is that, what does that mean?
Or is it because the area is affordable that that's where the STRs are going?
Well, that's what we wanted to find out. We wanted to figure out, are the units that are now operating as STR types two and three, particularly in the, in the tracts that are overrepresented by these types of STRs, like, are those STRs taking what few naturally occurring affordable housing units, that's a bad sentence, are those STRs basically taking from the naturally occurring affordable housing stock, and therefore there, there's, there's no more naturally occurring affordable housing for other people to buy and not have an STR? Or is it just that that whole area tends to be more affordable, and so therefore it is more likely that an STR would just be a part of the naturally occurring affordable housing? And so what we found is that the housing in those nine census tracts that are part of that, you know, outlining that orangey gold border, Jessica, can you go back one slide just so we can see that map? So in that, in that orangey gold area, just tends to be more naturally occurring affordable housing. If you compare the, forget about STRs for a second, if you just take the housing units that are in that study area and compare it to the rest of the city, what's in that study area is more affordable than the rest of the city. And then when you compare the affordability of all of the units in there compared to the affordability of just the STRs, then, you know, the proportions in terms of affordability really mirror each other, like, they're off by a couple of units.
Has that been overlaid with the redline maps also?
We did not overlay that with the redline maps, no. It would be interesting to do, but we, we've not, not, not done that.
I think my question, my question would be on this is, is the, and I know you're doing further analysis because I've looked at the next slide, but is the impact on STRs signi, I mean, when you look at the pie chart before this, it looks nominal, but then you kind of have zoomed in these areas. So like, what is the takeaway? Is it impacting, is it taking away from affordable units from folks at a degree with which we should be concerned, I guess would be the specific question I would have. And I'm sure there's a better way to phrase that, but I guess what's the takeaway that you can present on the impact in the marketplace for other people to be able to find housing stock because of STRs?
Well, and Mayor, just to add on a little bit to your comment, I'm, I'm curious even if it's taken away from the affordable housing within the core of our city, which I know it's, it's a concern as well.
Yeah, that's why, I'm, I'm looking in those study areas specifically. Does that make sense?
So that, it does make sense, it's just a question I'm hesitant to say with any authority that it does or does not. What I can tell you is that this seems to be the perennial question across the country, and that several studies have been done to study the impacts of short-term rentals on the cost of housing. One study that we found indicated that it was just a zero point two percent increase in the cost of housing, you know, because of STRs being located in the area. And so that to me, zero point two percent seems to be a pretty small effect. I think, you know, but we're also looking at this like at a sort of a macro level, we're looking at the entire study area, which, you know, can still be considered a pretty large area. And I don't want to say that just because it does not seem to have a huge impact in the study area, that on one street or one block, there isn't some impact happening. So I think that's sort of a non-answer answer, but I think in the aggregate, there's not going to be much of an effect, but perhaps when you really drill down and get on a micro level, then you might start to see something. Something like that is, is not really a part of this study because it's so nuanced and so specialized.
I think something that I'd like to, as you consider, continue to do analysis, I don't need to go on a block-by-block basis by any means, but if there are, you know, specific maybe neighborhood or census tracts that you could focus in on, and it looks like you kind of have, something that I think would be helpful to guide this council as we're evaluating the future of short-term rentals in this community, is to know with as much specificity as possible whether or not, what the significance of the impact of short-term rentals on affordability. Because I think what we're trying to avoid doing is making gut instinct reactions to this and make database decisions. So I, I know you've got some more analysis to do, and maybe looking at some of these census tracts where there's a heavier population of short-term rentals, you might be able to drill down and, and work towards a conclusion there.
I'd be curious to know, too, if it's not short-term rentals, what are the range of things that we think are driving up the cost? Because looking at Sanger Heights, for example, you, when I moved to Waco in 2013, you could easily buy a house in Sanger Heights for under a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and my house next door is on the market right now for one point two million dollars, and that is an STR, and that is a unheard-of amount of zeros for that neighborhood, and there are several in that neighborhood. So I'm, I, I know that people are moving to Texas at a high rate, and Waco, and our economy is booming, but I'd be curious, if not STRs, what are the things that we think are really resulting in properties' values just shooting through the roof in some of these core of the city neighborhoods?
Yeah, to Councilmember Palmer's point, I, I would be fascinated in seeing that as well, and, and the impact on sales prices of homes and, and tax appraisals. And I don't know if that's within the purview of this study or not, but to me, that would be helpful to the council in seeing what effect, in terms of affordable housing, the presence of an STR or a cluster of STRs has in that census block.
Getting to the direct impact of STRs specifically in an area is going to require some type of regression analysis, which is beyond the scope of this particular project. But certainly we can, you know, we're doing the outreach, we've already had a, an insight set of observations and data collection, and we'd be able to, you know, provide some insights about what could be driving up the cost, if not the STRs. But I do want to set expectations that to get to the number, the percent, that STRs are, you know, increasing housing prices, that is going to just be beyond the scope of this. There, there are so many other factors that go into this, you know, is it, are the STRs are going into a community because now there's this great tourist attraction, and tourists want to be in that location, walkable, you know, be in that area? And so, you know, it's the presence of new and interesting, fun, cool businesses that, you know, entice people to, to turn their home into an STR. You know, there's, there's no way to, it's chicken and egg, you know, where the STR show up there and then a business decided to locate, and that's, as I said, just beyond the scope of this particular study. With respect to the next steps of, of our work, we will continue to collect and finalize the quantitative and the qualitative data to inform the housing strategy, and then develop recommendations, and will really finalize the recommendations and draft the report. And then finally, in November or December, we'll finalize everything, present our findings and recommendations to the community. The timeline does have some variability, and it depends in part on the city's decision about including the vacant residential structure survey within this report or as an addendum. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and some of the questions we received up to this point. We're now going to turn our cameras back on and open up the conversation for additional questions.
One question I have is the recommendations that we can anticipate. One question I have is the recommendations that we can anticipate, are those going to be? I mean, maybe give us a sampling of what, when you say recommendations, is it like X number of rehabs? Or like how, what, what do you mean when you say recommendations, I guess?
Marjorie, do you want to take that one?
So I know, I know we're not, I'm not getting the recommendations. I'm just trying to, um, anticipate like kind of what, what the spectrum might look like.
Right, so our recommendations for, um, a study of this nature tend to focus on looking at, um, are there, um, areas where development pressure it has been causing or has the potential to cause displacement of, um, long-term residents? Uh, so we're looking very carefully, for example, in the area around Elm Avenue. Um, our, our other, um, recommendations will, uh, focus on how to, suggestions for how to finance housing initiatives. Um, and things like, um, creating a community land trust, for example, so that, uh, land can be, and can be acquired now, uh, before costs continue to rise and, uh, then passed on to nonprofits or even for-profit developers, uh, for creation of affordable housing that is, uh, you know, has a period of affordability of perhaps 99 years.
And will you help us kind of outline some of those options as well? Like, um, help bring educa- I know Galen and Ranisha are experts on this, but as a part of the presentation, kind of give us, um, a presentation on what all those options are? Kind of the buffet of opportunity for affordable housing opportunities?
Yes, we will. And, and we will also, uh, sort of group them under major categories. So for example, um, preservation of housing in neighborhoods, um, for targeting resources. Um, and the other, you know, another one might be, um, how to finance these options. Um, so they will be, um, rather specific.
That's great.
With examples of best practices in other cities and, and areas as well?
Yes, and naming where they, they're, they are, uh, where those best practices come from.
Thank you.
I think also to Council, uh, Councilmember Bearfield, just the best practices in terms of the housing mismatch. I think that's the piece that was most interesting to me in hearing your presentation is knowing that we have, uh, residents that are well above median income kind of taking some of that lower. Like, yeah, just the, um, the way that that's unaligned. So I'd be curious to know what other communities have done to address that.
Well, and, and good point, even as we are receiving the data, I wonder if it could be broken down by geographical location within our city as well? Because if they're, in the grand scheme of things, they might not look of the 50,000-plus homes that we have in our city. However, if it's concentrated in one specific area, I would like to know that. So maybe as we are moving forward with the data, um, that can be included in the presentation and the recommendation as well, please.
I will, um, let you know that on that specific request, um, to use 2019 data, we, um, must go to the county level because of the data source that is available. If you want something that's broken down at the, um, like, uh, within smaller geographies within the city, we need to go to a different data set. Um, and the limitations there is that it's a HUD, well, it's a custom tabulation of American Community Survey data created for HUD and HUD is very late in distributing that. So we're back to 2017. Um, that's the most recent available data and there's, there's just no way to duplicate it. Um, and the other limitation with that particular data set is because it's created for HUD, it uses HUD's income tiers. And so we're really constrained to zero to 30 and then up to, um, 50% and 80%. And then depending on whether you're looking in the rental or the owner market, it goes to 80% or 100%. There's just no way to get at, um, 120% like the city had requested.
So, so it isn't unavailable right now?
Uh, so if you want, like I said, if you, if you want just the city level, we're left with old data or older data and, um, different income tiers. If you want newer data with a greater range of income tiers, up to 120% of area median income, then we're, we're left, um, strictly at the county level because of the nature of the data set. So they're just trade-offs.
Any other questions? Um, I, this is a huge priority for our council and I'm really thankful for our staff's work on this. Um, and, uh, really look forward to these findings and continue to move forward with intentionality around what we can do strategically to ensure that we have good, quality, affordable housing stock in this community. And I think there's a lot of different, um, ways to achieve that goal. Um, and I look forward to continuing to partner with you all to hear from that, uh, on, on what those might be. Um, this is an incredible need in our community. We hear that from our residents and we look forward to, um, holistic and, and multiple, um, ways that we can achieve that goal together. So thank you for your presentation, you, Ranisha and Galen.
Thank you all.
All right, Mayor and Council, we'll, um, as our Zoom is turning off there, we will, uh, invite Ranisha to stay at the table because she's got work session 446 as well, which is a discussion of funding recommendations for our CDBG and home, uh, grants under the draft 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan. We, uh, this is a very similar presentation than what Ranisha showed at Budget Audit a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, with one exception she'll highlight, um, where we've revised based on some council feedback. Ranisha?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. As an entitlement community, the City of Waco is charged by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with developing and implementing a one-year annual action plan. The action plan includes activities and programs undertaken by the city and its community partners. In this presentation, we will focus on the action plan process and the funding recommendations for federal dollars granted by HUD. Highlighted in this presentation is the plan process, prior year accomplishments, CDBG and home allocations, CDBG and home recommendations, and our next steps. In preparation for this year's plan, Community Services took a different approach to community engagement due to COVID-19 restrictions. Staff visited two neighborhood associations and also streamed the meetings live via Zoom. Staff was able to explain funding at, funding recommendations and caps, restrictions, and eligible activities. At these meetings, surveys were distributed to attendees in both English and Spanish for comments. The survey could also be found on the department's website. After reviewing the surveys received, we were able to take into consideration activities such as affordable housing and home buyers assistance. On June 10th, the draft annual action plan was made available to the public and two public meetings were held to obtain community feedback. We have received no comments to date. During the development of this plan, staff reviewed prior year accomplishments under improved housing, ownership assistance, public facilities and infrastructure, public services, small business support, and homeless prevention to identify projects and activities for fiscal year 21-22. Some of the most notable successes of last year were allocating approximately 213,000 to homeless shelters for 24/7 shelter care for 167 homeless persons, assisted approximately 210 small businesses, 25 ramps, 19 roof repairs, and assisted 34 families through the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. Staff also utilized historical, historical funding data during the development of this plan by reviewing our past funding history to determine where funds were previously allocated and how impactful each program and activity was to our residents. Over the past five years, staff has seen a significant increase and decrease. Overall, we have received approximately $327,000 increase. Our annual allocation is not based off of program year performance. However, it is based off of a formula created by HUD. This year, the city has received an increase of $52,000. Although the city received an increased, an increase for FY 21-22, this is not an indication that our funding will increase on an ongoing basis. Over the past 10 years, the city has experienced a steady decline in allocation for federal funds with the exception of FY 19, FY 21, and FY 22. The funding chart demonstrates a decrease from 2.8 million in FY 12 down to 1.9 million in FY 20. Staff does not anticipate the funding increase to become our, our funding trend. As a result, we will continue to focus grant dollars on council priorities. A map has been included to provide you with the current CDBG eligible areas. All of the programs, all of our programs are citywide and eligibility is based on income and not geographical areas with the exception of park projects, site development, and new construction projects. The city entitlement grants consist of two federally funded programs, which are Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Grant. Both programs allow for the undertaking of several program and activities that benefit our residents. The CDBG grant can be used for a wide range of community development activities. This fiscal year, HUD awarded the City of Waco approximately $1.4 million with an administration cap at 20% for $286,000. The city's net available balance for funding activities is approximately $932,000. The home grant is used to create affordable housing for low-income households. This fiscal year, HUD awarded the City of Waco approximately $700,000 with an administration cap of 10% at $70,000. The city's net available balance for funding activities is approximately $525,000. In order for the city to implement and fund programs and activities, it must meet the following eligibility requirements. Benefit low to moderate income, prevent slum and blight, address an urgent need. Some examples of eligible activities are administration, public services, housing rehabilitation, and code enforcement, which are activities we currently administer and have partnerships throughout the community. Staff held several strategy meetings to discuss accessibility and affordability and how residents will benefit from staff's recommendation, which we will see in the next few slides. Staff received, reviewed the CDBG grant first as it is our most flexible grant and then worked through our home grant. The CDBG recommendations is as follows. For the housing and facility-oriented projects, we received nine requests for a little over 1.5 million and are recommending to fund 1.3 million of said request. The following are recommended for funding under the housing and public facility category. Waco CDC, also known as GRASROOTS for the Roof Repair Program, the City of Waco's Rehab and Reconstruction Program, and Program Delivery, funding for both the Down Payment Assistance Program and Rehab and Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. Both of these assist in covering specific duties outside of the administration cap. You may notice that, uh, this year we did not fund code enforcement. Um, they will be directly funded through general funds. And we do appreciate working with the budget office to get that down for us. We are also recommending for site development in support of the development of affordable housing throughout the city core. Staff is currently reviewing developers' requests and there may be an opportunity for the city to partner with these developers yielding a mixture of affordable and market rate units. Under the public service category, we received four requests, which totaled over $159,000. Due to COVID restrictions, staff was unable to meet in person for our public service workshop. However, a PowerPoint presentation was placed on the website for applicants to access. Staff is recommending funding for three public service programs. They are as follows: Talitha Kuhn, Inspiracion, and Family Abuse. Each of the programs are being recommended for leveled funding and is sustainable at this recommended amount. You may notice Mission Waco did not receive a staff recommendation for funding this year as the nonprofit received a total of approximately $148,000 for FY 20 and will receive an additional $152,000 in CARES Act funds. These are the activities that are eligible to be funded with our home dollars. These include administration, which is capped at 10%, homeownership promotion via rehab and new construction with our nonprofit partners, tenant-based rental assistance via our partnership with MHMR, which includes case management. Under the housing category, we received five requests, which totaled over $950,000. The following are recommended for funding under the home program. Tenant-based rental assistance through MHMR, housing development acquisition and rehab, and community housing development organization with Waco CDC.
Ranisha, real quick, um, on your previous slide, it has the amount recommended to fund, um, and that is above the total available?
I'm sorry, which one?
Sorry, on the, I think the previous slide? The home request here, it has the total available being at 525 and then the amount recommended to fund at 700,000? So I'm curious where that extra 200,000 is?
Yes, that includes, um, our CHODA, which is the 15%. And also we're recommending, recommending funding for down payment assistance in our home admin program. If council is supportive of the recommendations today, we will proceed as follows. We will continue to move forward with the annual action plan based on the current funding recommendations and the adoption of the plan on August 3rd to submit to HUD by August 16th. Are there any questions?
Ranisha? I, I do have one question. Um, is there, or has there ever been, um, a recommended like cap or tenure for those who apply or rotation of applications? So for instance, if you've been funded for the past five years, maybe you had to sit out a couple and let other organizations come. Do we have any, any policy of that nature or is it something that is done, is it done other city? I mean, tell me, tell me how, because I just want to make sure that, um, all of our entities in the city that, that would like to apply have, I mean, and I know it's a public application and, and the information is there. But I mean, if, if it is trending that these are the organizations that get funded, how would anybody else be encouraged to apply?
So previously, no, we've never had a policy, um, to mitigate that, that issue. However, uh, staff, we are looking at, um, implementing some type of policy for those who are, um, applying each year and receiving funding each year. We're looking at a step-down process.
Awesome, thank you.
That's great. Um, I had a question, or maybe even a, a future genomics, something we can talk about in the future. I think if, you know, if you could go back on the slide, um, there's a couple up there on these. On these slides, there's a lot of work that the City of Waco is doing. Um, and I think I would like to know kind of what are, like, I saw some bullet points on, go forward maybe to the, I don't know where it was. It was like City of Waco is doing a, I don't think it's a rehab program, but maybe it's like a site development is that one? I think that there's a City of Waco, um,
Down payment?
Mm-hmm. Like, uh, uh, site development and I think there's some other City of Waco work that, uh, we'll be doing with these funds. that we'll be doing with these funds, and I would love to kind of hear what our plans and processes are to do that, our timelines, and what we anticipate and expect the outcomes of that to be, because obviously, based on the last work session we had, housing continues to be a real priority for us, it's something we're, we're very interested in, and seeing how we can put these dollars to work to achieve these goals is going to be great. I know that we'll work to measure the outcomes of third parties that we're distributing these funds to, but, you know, I think also understanding how we go deep on this is going to be important, and kind of tag team in that. I think the same thing is, as we distribute these funds to third parties, it's always good to get an update throughout the year on how those funds are utilized, the outcomes that they are achieving, and kind of, yeah, how they're being used, so we can kind of measure how we're doing in, in these allocations.
I think that's a request we've made for all of the organizations we're funding, whether it's these, or Creative Waco, or Prosper Waco, you know, money that we've given, how, report on how they're doing throughout the year with the funding that we're giving them, so I think that should be included in, in it as well.
Yeah, and I just want to dovetail with that, Mayor. The, the report on page twenty-eight, I think, has, I love this little summary, they're the six sort of outside companies, and what we're, what the expectation is, that's a great report. I would like to just to kind of echo what you're saying, Don, if you could put the, there's only fourteen funded issues, six of them are listed, the eight others are City of Waco, so it'd be cool just to have the one, kind of a one-liner on the eight City of Waco projects to, in that same format, just to keep the consistency, because that, that one little page on page...
Yeah, twenty.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-eight, kind of tells it all. Well, not all, but it gives you a thumbnail of what's going on, and have that same consistency with the Cow stuff, too.
Renesha, question, oh?
One other, the page twenty-nine then doesn't have the current recommendation, right? The, because I'm still looking at numbers that have the code enforcement at two-hundred thousand, and, in the, in the materials.
He's looking at page twenty-nine of the agenda packet, is that right?
Is everybody else, is that, oh, these are older numbers, right? These are not current.
The code enforcement is for sure an outdated number.
Right. If I can just see this page twenty-nine, just send it to me, whatever the latest.
Yes, we'll get that updated for you.
Okay, thanks, Manager HUD, now, great report.
Renesha, question about the Mission Waco funding. With the CARES Act funding that they are receiving, or they have received, does, does that meet the specific budget line item that would have been covered otherwise with CDBG funds?
So, they would have received less, and so they're, they're receiving more than what they would initially receive yearly.
Okay, it's just coming from a different, like, services are still being done, just from a different pot?
Yes.
Perfect.
Any other questions? You're Renesha, appreciate you.
Thank you.
And we have, do you want me to introduce you, or do you want to introduce yourself? He'll be introducing himself as he takes the seat. Bradley Ford, I think, is going to be giving our next discussion, and joining him is Nick.
Yeah, Nick Sarpy.
Sarpy.
Nick Sarpy, who's going to be my backup here. I'm hopeful Nick has come up with a really good quote from a philosopher, or a poet, perhaps. No, but...
Colbert?
I'm not as well-read as Dr. Griggs, so...
Budget guys.
He's got me there, but, no, we're glad to be in front of you, council. Let me get situated, this is a little different, a little different setup than I'm used to, but glad to be in front of you this afternoon, with the intention to really give you a preview of where the manager's office is in the development of next year's budget. I wanted to provide you that preview ahead of the budget's filing, to kind of create an opportunity for you to ensure that I'm thinking in alignment with you as a council, and if I'm missing something, I can hear dialogue amongst the team here today. So, with that in mind, I wanted to start with some key inputs for the budget development. These are things that you've probably heard but not seen all collected onto one screen. As I think about putting together the budget, there are some big things moving on us, certainly positively, our strong sales tax growth that's happened this year, well beyond, frankly, my wildest imagination, giving us great flexibility moving into next year. You'll notice that we budgeted thirty-six million dollars in the current year on sales tax, and the current projection from Nick's team is, we're going to be about forty-five to forty-six million dollars to close the year. We are going to move up the budgeted number for next year to forty-three point six, which is a very large substantial increase. Another key input is, we remain in a, in a pretty interesting situation when it comes to appraisals and the work that MCAT is doing. Even as of this point, there's about a third of our value citywide that's still tied up in the ARV process, which creates, you know, as you're wanting to file a budget, you certainly don't want to see that number at a third of the value, that's, you know, three and a half or four billion dollars worth of value, it's quite a bit. Also, in my mind, certainly inflation is starting to creep into the conversation. We've had a couple of, or three or four years where fuel costs and materials costs have stayed really flat, and below what we budget, which has provided us flexibility in the budget, and I think that those days may be sunsetting on us, and certainly something that's in the back of Nick and, and Paul in my mind as well. This next bullet point is not a criticism, so don't take it as such. It's, it's a recognition of our council's vision, and certainly the manager's office vision. We have high expectations for services and projects, and so, as I look to build forward into next year, we've also got to build the team behind us to do the work, and that, the team that we have is great, but they're also stretched, and there's opportunities to provide additional backup. And then lastly, as the council recalls, we have brought forth two new revenue sources, the first of which is the impact fees on the water, sewer, and roadway side. We appreciate the council's authorization of those, but as a reminder, it's not yet going to be a whole lot of money, because we're using that phased-in, multi-year approach. Actually, we budget a little under two-hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, and I think that's across multiple funds, if I remember right. And then lastly, of course, the drainage utility on your agenda this evening, with the five-dollar per residential unit per month rate, as Mayor Protem put it, provides us some flexibility in our general fund budget that we haven't had in years past. It also, frankly, funds the maintenance of the drainage infrastructure that we've not necessarily had in the past either, so those are some of the key inputs that are, are helping me think through where we're headed. As a reminder, the, the process is, we listen to our directors. Those are the subject matter experts predominantly on the list of recommended items you're going to see in a moment. Those came from our directors, those came from people on the ground looking and saying, what do I need to deliver program services, what do I need in relation to new staffs? The Office of Management and Budget provided a process by which to review those, we had quite a few, as you see, a hundred and five requests totaling twenty-six million dollars, of which twenty of that came, would be in, in the general fund, six of it would be outside the general fund and a collection of our other funds. And then they came to me and the CMO team, and we talked through what, how do we align that list to the council's strategic goals, and where I, as your manager, want to take the organization? So, I'm going to provide you a couple of slides here of the recommended projects. It's a long list, it's not dissimilar to last year, about the same time. We've grouped them by the goal, the council's strategic goals. These are all of our one-time requests, so these are not people. These are projects, these are equipment, these, a few plans on here as well. I'm going to pull out a couple to highlight that are interesting to me, and I'll give you all time to ask any questions that are of interest to you. Certainly, our, the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth street corridor plan is something that I think is, we want to move forward on. We saw the La Salle area corridor plan come together this past year, and I think the twenty-fifth street corridor is, has an opportunity to be incredibly vibrant over time, and we want to bring in a consultant to help us with that, and create the strategies to move forward, particularly on, you know, an equitable, small-business-oriented approach to that corridor. I know the mayor and council have been interested in our greenfield development planning efforts as well, and so we've got a Highway eighty-four corridor plan listed. We've also, of course, we've got this oriented towards goals, but also the source of funding, so you'll notice the branding study, as well as the relocation of our visitor center listed. Those would come out of the convention center fund, not our general fund. I think that there's an opportunity, certainly that our, our team sees, to bring the visitor center from its current location on the Ranger Hall of Fame site into downtown, into closer proximity to our guests and our visitors. Additionally, we have the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which will move forward on releasing an RFP before the budget year starts, but this provides the funding for it to take place. Additionally, we have the Facilities Assessment Plan. This is a reality of, we've added a few folks over the years, and we've not yet necessarily caught up in terms of space allocation, and it's time for us to talk through, where do we need space to house new employees, and particularly in our core downtown functions. If you walk through City Hall, we are putting people in as many places as we can, and need some flexibility on where we're headed in the future, particularly for our downtown facilities. With that in mind, I do have some finish-out-of-office space listed there, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. There's, the basement of City Hall certainly can be more efficient, there's some spaces in the basement that, that could house a few more people, as well as we have an existing facility on Columbus Avenue that, or Washington, sorry, that could house a few folks as well, so requesting one-time money for that. And probably the, the project on this list that's most, kind of a passion project for a lot of folks on the city team, is the turnout gear for firefighters. As the council is well aware, the, the risk to firefighters related to cancer is, is pretty significant, and this funding would allow for a second set of gear for those firefighters, so that if they are coming back from a scene or an incident, they can put that into the extractors at the station, process that, and bring a clean set of gear onto their next call. So that's a, a project that's kind of a continuation. In years past, we added the extractors to each station to give, you know, to give quality cleaning of that turnout gear, and this would be the second set of gear. It's expensive, certainly, almost half a million dollars, but, but certainly a move in the right direction to, to show how we value our public safety employees. Any of these that are of interest of questions, long-term, I, I tell you, after this meeting, I can provide you backup documentation on each item, there's a, there's an actual project sheet behind each one, so if you're just generally interested in seeing that, that's, that might be a place to get more information.
City Manager Ford, you mentioned the eighty-four corridor plan and green space. Which portion of eighty-four, again, are we speaking about directly? Because, you know, I didn't know, there's, it's a lot of it.
There's a lot of eighty-four, so in my mind, it's down west eighty-four.
Okay.
So, as you get close to that intersection of Spiegelville Road...
Sure.
And thinking about green spaces, how they connect, thinking about even up on Old Arena Road, properties there, and, and really trying to drive a, a new activated space on that vacant property.
Bradley, I have a question for you. I really appreciate seeing this in terms of the strategic goals. I remember from our retreat earlier this spring, our top two strategic goals were economic development and equity, and I don't see equity as a strategic goal under any of these listed, so I'm curious why that is, and I recognize that something like twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth street corridor plan, there is a strong equity component there, but would love if you could speak to that, and I know that there were some key equity pieces that we were interested in, whether it was the disparity study, or the salary for the DEI, or whatever that senior director position is.
Sure, and the reason it's not listed is because we, we actually have so much in the current year budget, I'm seeking to pull that up as we speak, related to equity, and I'll just kind of go through the list real quickly, because I'm, you know, obviously pretty excited about our work there. Now, the disparity studies, one, it's out for, actually, the bids have been submitted as of maybe a week or two ago, and I know the team is evaluating that, it's funded project in the current year. Additionally, we funded the engineering study on Johnson Hall to ensure that it's there with us forever. That's an equity project that I'm pretty excited about. We, within, in a moment, you're going to see there's some staff for communications as well, and embedded within that conversation is the equity component of multi-language services related to social media, and, did I get an amen on that? Is that what you said?
Some strong D-two, D-four appreciation there.
So, yeah, there, there are components, you know, embedded into certainly our current budget that are equitable, and, and, you know, even, even to the point of the transaction that's on the agenda tonight related to the YMCA. You know, I think there's really strong activities that didn't wait for the budget to get, to get going.
That are in the FY twenty-twenty-one or twenty-one, twenty-two?
Those are things activated in the current year budget.
Yeah, I think that that work, that work got positioned and would have been on the his, the, this display going into FY twenty, because those are things, and then, you know, we had to slip and had that, introduced ourselves to a pandemic, and so we missed a few things.
Let's make sure not to do that again.
I mean, that part, that part, wash your hands when you leave from here. But the equity officer is also, is, has already been budgeted in this, this, our current budget.
It is.
And it, it's just along the process. I know, I mean, Deputy City Manager Emerson, we understand you had to run a health, the health district and the convention center and all the things, so we, we just going to wait patiently for the acquisition of our, our equity manager and the staff, but I know it's coming, and we were excited about the disparity study. I understand that, that we were quite popular amongst those who do that study, and have our choice of industry leaders in that position, so I'm, I mean, pat yourself on the back for putting out a RFQ that, that garnered that kind of attention.
That is absolutely true, and in terms of the, the equity position, I know Deputy City Manager and I talked, maybe, I don't know, a week or two ago, and I know she's working on a multitude of items, but that is on, on our list to get posted, and it is funded, as you mentioned, in the current year, and certainly will be for the next year's budget as well.
City Manager Ford, question about the downtown action plan to improve infrastructure. Does this include, I'm assuming we are referring to streets that are not currently being worked on, for example, University Parks, or Fourth and Fifth, or Washington, that we've already budgeted and are currently working, or about to start working? Would this include most of minor streets, I should say?
Well, this will include, it includes all of them, and here's, here's why. You have, you have a lot of street and underground work happening on Fourth, Fifth, and, and the downtown action plan seeks to kind of marry up our, where do we want pedestrians to go? Where do we want to prioritize our pedestrian improvements and streetscape? So it may be that, like, Fourth and Fifth do get included in this conversation, because the reality is, we have a downtown that's the geographic size of, like, an Austin, but it's very, as, as many of you recognize, it's very spread out, and so, when we come together and talk about, we want to move our pedestrians, we've got to be particular about, okay, do we want to put them on Franklin? Or do we want to put them on Mary? Because it can't be, we put them on every street. There's a, there's the prioritization that has to happen, and so the action plan seeks to build upon those foundational pieces like Imagine Waco and other planning documents.
Even?
It is, yeah.
Okay. And...
And it'll benefit a couple of other projects to, to kind of layer in, you know, we, we do have the, the need to get deeper on the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit, and how that layers into Franklin is particularly important, because Franklin's only eighty to ninety feet wide, and we're trying to put a hundred-and-twenty feet worth of stuff in it, and so, how do you plan for in downtown, okay, we're going to move some of that over to Mary, maybe that's the pedestrian traffic, maybe we need on-street parking there, where do we do that? Or off-street parking there, where do we do that?
But it will build on some of the numerous... But it will build on some of the numerous downtown studies we've already done?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and we've got a rich history there. This isn't, this is not starting over on Imagine Waco. This is not throwing it in the trash. This is seeking to prioritize our investments so that we don't spend millions of dollars on streetscape, on Franklin, and wake up and say, oh, man, I wish we would have done that over here first. Good question. All right, let's talk about recurring expenses. And obviously predominantly, these are staff members. Not in any particular order, but but again, organized by strategic goal. I say not in any particular order because we do have a an assistant city attorney on the list. And if if it was me, it would have been on the top of the list generally. But it is down there.
Well played.
So we have, we have a number of positions requesting, that I'm requesting, recommending to be added. Economic development coordinator, accommodation inspector. That's an inspector that can both do plumbing as well as electrical. That's an important position, as well as a long-range planning manager to support some of these planning efforts that that we're undertaking, both in the core of the city and on the edge. That's a position that right now, we get to it when we have time. And when we're overloaded with development cases, we this falls down the list. And so a long-range planner is something that's pretty important to Deidre and I. We do plan to offset those as much as possible using fee increases. Obviously, those that have to be justified and documented by law that that we're, as we pass along those fees to our customers, our developers, that we have to show the amount of time worked by each of those is consistent with the fee we're charging. Additionally, we, you know, last year, we added a position in IT or two positions in IT that that really brought us forward on our GIS and decision support. I am adding another position for an applications programmer, recommending that in IT. That'll help us do SQL database work and connecting all of our systems together. I have a line item there for communications team. It's it's listed as multiple positions right now, and it's a kind of a plug number of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's because our strategic communication study is getting to the point where it's about to be submitted to me. I think it's going to be a three to five people added to that team. So I've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, again, as a kind of a plug for now. And we'll we'll see where those recommendations lie and, of course, report out to the council.
I think as a council that harps on communications and how we communicate, I want to applaud you for this because I think this is going to carry the message that we take to the city to a different level. And so it is imperative that this is part of our growth strategy as an organization.
Agreed. And good work coming out of communications group, you know, no, no shade there at all, right? We just, we have, as you, as you put it, mayor pro tem, a story to tell. And so we need to tell it. And and there's a lot of channels to tell it on, and it just takes people to do it.
Well, and just the way we communicate is advanced and changed. So it 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 just will require more.
As someone who just got on Instagram, I feel you're paying on that one.
The Instagram.
The the gram, yeah.
Those two items in the green are important because these aren't people. The the two items in the green, the street preservation and bridge maintenance, I want to talk for a second about, and then we'll move into the next slide. But on street preservation, you'll recognize that number, two point eight million, is, I believe in the current year budget, it's two point three or so. Do you remember, Nick?
About two point seven.
Two, oh, I thought we were going up more than that. Did you squeeze me on that one? Oh, man, I thought we had better story there. So we're bumping it a little bit, but not much. Okay. How about the next one, though? Bridge maintenance. What's in there right now? Zero. Good, Amy's in the back.
Talk about an amen coin.
So, yeah, bridge maintenance, zero dollars. And so certainly, we have a lot more bridge work to do. And you see us putting in one point two five to at least start a recurring expense on bridge maintenance. That's in no means solving all of our bridge issues. So got to start somewhere, and that's that's where we're starting. Additionally, we have the police grant officers that we've prior talked about on the cops office grant. That's our match on the people's side. On the prior slide, you saw the equipment and vehicles probably on the one-time expense as well. Firefighter wise, I do have three firefighters in the budget proposed. And the thinking there is we are going to need to add a new station along Richie Road. You know, it's in the three to five-year window is what I would say. And the the smart way to prepare for that is to start adding a few positions each year so that when we get to ready to build a station, we're not adding twelve positions. That's what it takes to staff a fire station. We're not adding all twelve of those right in one year because it just becomes a really large budget item. So adding those three, and that would be part of a, you know, kind of a longer range plan for the Richie Road area. And then the last one I'll highlight is the park planner. You know, I think on the CIP side, on our capital improvement plans, we're we're trying to drive a lot of new dollars into streets as well as parks. And the parks team is going to need some support to deliver on that vision. There's going to be some some significant projects to take on. And so I'd like to bring that park planner to the team. You might say, well, Bradley, you visited with me and talked to me about my budget priorities, and I don't see mine listed. So want to remind the council and the and the public that we're on the the prior slides we showed, we're we're matching, you know, the expense to revenues. And there are things that that weren't listed, that we intend to bring forward in these other buckets. And the bucket shown, of course, on the left, the our reserve fund, which currently sits around eleven million dollars. We have, you know, what I feel like is a a great plan for vehicle replacement to bring dollars into the right vehicle, the right size vehicle, the right type vehicle. You'll you'll see more about that in the coming months, as well as HVAC and roof replacements and additional CIP support, eleven million dollars in that bucket. And of course, our thirty-four million dollars of American Rescue Plan, you can see kind of where we're thinking. I'm not allocating dollars, but I am putting kind of a list together. And that's based on your feedback to me or things that I'm hearing you say that feel like they might qualify under ARC. And then the other category on flood-prone property acquisition, that's perhaps something we can use another funding source for as we have floodplain opportunities that that can't necessarily be mitigated except through an acquisition. Then lastly, as we get kind of close to the end here, wanted to talk about rates, particularly property tax and our utility rates. We are at the point where I'm I'm still saying out loud that we're going to keep water and sewer rates level, as well as our solid waste rates level. That's recognizing that we're adding in the drainage fee. And it would not be well timed to add in additional rate increases when we're recognizing that new drainage fee on our customers. Additionally, from a property tax rate change standpoint, I am going to propose a reduction of a fourth of a penny, which is recognized not a lot. It would be the first rate reduction that we've had since FY fourteen. So it's been a few years since we've done that. And still with that, we anticipate a significant increase in our CIP funding level. So we'll still be able to move a very significant portion of dollars from M and O to the debt rate side that gets us a CIP that's in the low forty million dollar range. There, obviously, we're dialing in that number at this point. It it could, it could inch up on us, depends on the NCAD numbers that we continue to receive. But it will be a a strong CIP number, particularly compared to what we started the budget year with, you know, like around fifteen, sixteen million dollars. So real strong strategy there. Staff compensation.
City manager Ford, real quick, if I may ask, I about the reduction of the tax rate. If I was thinking big here, what would it, what type of impact would it have if we reduce the overall tax rate by half of a penny?
So in context, you know, a penny right now, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, it's it's a little over a million dollars, maybe one point one million dollars is a penny?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you went from a quarter penny to a half penny, it's a two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy dollar, a two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy thousand dollar ask of Bradley, team, go find that amount of money in the budget somewhere.
I I would like to explore that option, just to see what staff can come up with. I think that, given the year that we had last year with COVID nineteen and many of our homeowners, our constituents were impacted by the pandemic and just the overall state of the economy, I would like to just explore that option to see what we can do to bring that tax, reduce the tax rate by half a penny.
That is definitely feedback that's helpful.
Thank you.
You know, echo mayor pro tem Sabido on that. Particularly as the numbers come back from the appraisal district, if it looks like we have room in there, I'd like to ooch that up if we could. Because this is a product of the effort that this council and you, city manager and staff, have made on finding other fee sources, as you've already mentioned in your presentation. The 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 impact fees and the drainage fees are helping us or enabling us to to do this kind of a tax rate cut. So I appreciate that. But yes, if we gain, whatever we can get out of that, when the appraisal numbers all come in, then we take another look at that.
Good. And that's a good point. That is, there there will be a submittal from the appraisal district on the twenty-fifth that could move us a little bit, and that could provide us an option. But regardless, we hear you on moving to maybe evaluating what the cost would be to go to a half cent and how we would structure the budget to do that.
Yeah, I I think that that's a wise ask. I think that I'm proud that we're able to, staff is able to come with this recommendation, and I think it's worthwhile to continue to explore. So, yep, it's great, something to celebrate that we're able to to look at that with this lens right now.
Especially since even during the pandemic, we were unable to do a reduction of any kind and haven't for the past seven years, so.
Yeah, none of us were on council. There's not a single council member, myself included, that were a part of a rate reduction. So this will be the first time that any of us have been a part of something like that.
Context. On compensation strategy, this won't, I don't think this will shock anybody where we are at this point because we had a good discussion, I felt like, at budget audit last week. But we are bringing a fifteen dollar an hour minimum for our full and part-time employees. And from a strategy standpoint, that will leave a general salary increase of at least two percent for the remaining employees. So those that don't get brought up to fifteen will have at least a two percent increase in their general salary number. And we're able to support that in the in the strategy you're seeing here. From a Wedmet standpoint, Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation, I am recommending an increase. This is our our typical kind of historical increase of adding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our funding level, which would bring our our amount annually to three million dollars.
Is that where the county is interested in sitting as well? Is that where the county is interested in sitting as well?
That would be the minimum that the county is interested in in sitting at. I believe perhaps they want to go higher. But but this is where I am at this point, trying to balance all the competing interests. Outside agencies, I do, I'm I'm bringing them forward at the same funding level and the same the same agency list as last year, and not proposing to make changes. There were some that that asked for more resources. But what you're hearing from me say is I want to focus in on our infrastructure. I want to focus in on employee comp and focus in on property tax modifications before we move into the outside agencies area. And then, of course, Rainisha mentioned to you the code compliance, which will, which is, you know, a great move, but certainly has a cost on the general fund side of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then lastly, wanted to talk about a proposed change to the council stipend. Currently, the council has provided an annual stipend of six thousand dollars, five hundred dollars a month, and proposed to change that to twenty-five thousand dollars annually. And we did some benchmarking. There's, you know, I think there's kind of two ends of the spectrum on this conversation. There are a few cities that do a larger stipend. And there's certainly a lot of cities that do smaller stipends, but wanted to provide that feedback to you and that recommendation to you that would go into effect in October later this year if the budget was adopted.
Bradley, it's my understanding that a lot of cities have the council stipend included in their charter. Would that be your understanding as well?
Certainly, I mean, cities, there's lots of ways cities do it. And I think if, we've got a lot of professionals that have worked in a lot of cities around Texas. But, yes, often cities have, there's several options. They could have the the council's stipend specifically listed at a dollar amount in the charter. The charter might say if a council votes on a change, it doesn't go into effect until the members have changed. So it's for future councils. Or I think in Fort Worth, the one I've spent a little bit of time in, the charter says that a council pay change goes to a vote of the people. So there's several ways to address it. Certainly, our charter does not address it in that manner. It allows for you to have this deliberation in this manner as part of the budget process.
I would like to explore that option to see what it would take to include that in our charter. Our charter needs to be revisited regardless, so that might be a future agenda item. But for this specifically, I think that's something that I would like for staff to come to counsel with the recommendation of how that is included in the charter.
Now, just add, could we see the the diligence that you did on the, not not right now, but can you share that with us after this meeting on other cities' stipends? And now how those compare to to Waco?
Of course.
Great to look at. So I mean, just a little uncomfortable, I guess all of us are a little uncomfortable, you know, saying, I think we've all, all of us spend more time on this, and we all have very understanding employers that allow us to do this. But it seems like the growth of the city in the last few years would perhaps merit a bit of a boost. But I want, I want to make sure that we, I just want to see what other cities are doing before we before we do the whole twenty-five. Because I think since I've been on council and mayor, I think we were both on one. We went from three fifty to five hundred, I think. And again, that was just mostly a cover out of pocket. So going up a little bit, I can get comfortable with. It just, I'd like to see a little bit more of the data before.
Sure. Will it provide that?
One of the things that I I will say, and I can understand how council member Holmes, you may, you know, there's some discomfort in this. One of the things I think about, as long as we've been instituting this conversation on equity and and what that looks like, is historically, you know, your elect, city elected officials that are not full-time, because this is not a full-time council, this is a volunteer council, have to have the ability to afford to do so. And I think that looking at a competitive stipend, I don't, I mean, whatever it is, is something that would would bode better for future councils. Because what happens if I have the great desire to serve my city and to sit and function in municipal government, however, kids got eaten, you know, and I can't afford to do both because this does take a lot. And and more than most people realize. And so you're making a a group of people have to make a decision whether they want to function in the manner that I think, which is services, the price we pay for the air we breathe, or do we want to work and be able to take care and sustain our family? So I think that the opportunity to have a stipend, again, larger than what we have now, would allow more opportunity for more people to sit in the seats that we sit. Just a thought.
I would love to jump on to that bandwagon. I think because we've identified that equity is one of our guiding both values and strategic goals, this really feels like the next barrier we have to address. And I think the way that this is structurally formatted right now, this is a very classist structure. Like, there are very few Wacoans with our median income being under forty thousand dollars a year that can afford to take on a role that's upwards of twenty hours a week of unpaid labor. I just, as a singular person on this council, can not take on a full-time social work job in this community because of the demands of council. And I want to see more helping professionals, more teachers, more construction workers, folks that are really the bread and butter of our community at these tables. folks that are really the bread and butter of our community at these tables. Uh, but that's cost prohibitive at this point. So I am of the opinion that I think this won't be a fully equitable, accessible seat until this is a full-time salaried role. I don't think this needs to be an insane amount, but something that a Waco ISD teacher could say, yeah, I can afford to give up teaching for the next two years to run for council and still feed my family like council member Bearfield so eloquently stated. I think if we do stay in the stipend role, I'd like for us to consider offering benefits. So that way, if someone had to quit a full-time job in order to do this as one of their part-time jobs, they're still being covered, um, by health insurance. I think that feels particularly apt, given Dr. Griggs' talk about how highly uninsured Texans are and the rate that, um, just the, the ramifications of social determinants of health that happen when one is uninsured.
And maybe as we see some of that data, that councilmember Holmes asked for that to direct our conversation as well, so.
Um, yeah, I appreciate, I, I hear the different sides of this. I think the goal of this council is to have competent working professionals. So I, I, um, I think we need to have an increase in the stipend. I, I don't, I'm not where councilmember Palmer is for it to be the full times, uh, with benefit, but I do think, um, we need to have a higher stipend. And I think the goal of this council is to have competent working professionals, but we need to, I believe not limit it to the independently wealthy. And I think that there's a greater expectation, even since I've been on council, the expectation from constituencies in every district, um, has increased, um, for the, the amount of meetings that we host, uh, budget and audit. When I enrolled on council, there were three councilmembers that served on budget and audit and three councils that didn't, three councilmembers that didn't. Um, and it was not the same number of budget and audit meetings. They were far fewer in the amount of hours that it took and they were much more. So the expectation, not only with city meetings, but the reactivation of our neighborhood programs and the expectation that councilmembers attend those. The, um, other boards and liaison visits and meetings with constituency, whether business or individuals, um, or civic groups has increased significantly. And I think that expectation has increased. Um, but I also think the return on investment to the tax basis there, I think that we have a council whose innovation, um, who's, um, forward thinking, both, both, um, in economic development and quality of life have, um, brought a value to the bottom line. And again, we have a half, nearly a half billion dollar budget and we're talking about a small stipend. So I wanna, I think it's important to think about this contextually, um, as well. I think this is a prudent step for the citizen of Waco. I think increasing the stipend is a prudent step to ensure that there's good governance. And my vision for this, the, this body is to continue to be policymakers, to set the budget, to be policy, to not do city management. Um, the city ma- it's a city manager form of government. Um, but I think there's a return on investment by exploring, is it worthwhile to increase the stipend? And, uh, I think that with the growth that Waco's experiencing economically and in population, um, we're seeing an increased demand, um, for time and increased expectation of expenses that are being incurred, literal expenses that are being incurred, um, by councilmembers. And so I think it's worthwhile, um, to increase this. Um, I don't know that it, I, I'm great with feeling it out and, um, but, uh, on, on what that number is, um, but I certainly believe an increase, um, from where we are now is gonna be prudent to ensure that we have good governance in the future. Um, so yeah, that's, that's my take on it.
Mayor, I don't mean to steal the last word because I think you summarized the issue pretty well. Um, but I, I do feel as, uh, the mayor and, uh, several of my esteemed colleagues here have articulated, I think that making this, uh, service more accessible to members of our community has real value. Uh, I personally, and, and I would say every single member on this, uh, Deas did not get into this, uh, because of any form of, uh, of payment. I did not know about, uh, the, the stipend until I was elected. I was glad to receive 500 dollars a month, uh, but that's not something that my family needs, but it is something that a lot of families would if they took this on. And I think readjusting the monthly stipend is something that's probably overdue and something that will help contribute, uh, to recruiting and retaining the best policymakers, uh, here in our community. Obviously we have a very young council as well. We're seeing a lot of energy, youth and enthusiasm, uh, for leadership in this city. And it does have a lot to do with our good, wise, city, city management and city leadership, uh, that we're on so many, the radar of so many nationally and internationally. But I do think this is a time to readjust the stipend. Uh, I think that we could probably come to a, probably a reasonable range, uh, whether that's, you know, tripling or, uh, or quadrupling somewhere in there. Um, but yeah, I think it's part-time work and, and like the mayor says, I mean, this seems like 10, 20 years ago, this was more like board service. And now it feels a lot more than that. And seeing my colleagues at multiple events per week, uh, it does feel like it's something more than just, uh, serving on a board. So anyway, I defer, uh, to the wisdom of our mayor and, and our fellow councilmembers, but I feel like this is probably the time has come.
I think that, that Josh brought a great point is that if someone doesn't wanna take a stipend, they certainly don't have to.
I think my concern is if we increase the stipend significantly, that there might be a parallel expectation from constituents to see that much more out of us. And I think there's, there's nothing else that we can give as the six of us. We.
And I think what.
And I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think one of the problem is, is that, you know, if we do what we do well, people don't realize, well, all that has to go into it.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we may, you know, if, with full understanding, it just may take a, a, a day in the life of, 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 of councilmember, uh, Borderood and to explain the running and the things, but you know, and, and to be fair, there are many people who didn't realize that we did not get full salaries.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, I think there are perspectives all over the place. And so what we know is, is what we do and I have confidence in what we do and the amount of work that we produce, um, the benevolence of our employers in allowing us to do so. And, and, and we just now have the opportunity to move forward, to advance what this looks like for the future.
Absolutely. I just wanna say for constituents, if you want more out of the six of us than we give with our current time, this has to be a full-time role because we're already giving, I mean, 60-hour work weeks to have full-time jobs and beyond council. And I don't think that's a reality that most folks are cognizant of.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll, um, I'll send out some additional info on those survey cities for the council's benefit. And we'll, um, we'll continue forward in this conversation, likely with a follow-up on the 27th or the 3rd of August. With that in mind, I wanted to turn it over to Nick and let him walk through the rest of the schedule. Um, oh, sorry, Nick, you can't do that with your mind.
He was like, I can't walk through the schedule if I don't see it.
Uh, go ahead, Nick.
City manager four before, I'm sorry, Nick, to, to, but I just wanna take, once again, to really, really applaud the city of Waco for moving our employees to 15 dollars an hour. I think that is a great move, once again, for attracting top-of-the-line employees and re- keeping them with our organization. And so, um, if we ask this of our companies that are coming into town, uh, it is the least that we can do to pave the way and set the example. And so I really wanna say that the staff compensation, it is, has my full support and I'm so grateful that even the conversation started with this years ago. Um, I think I had just joined council when councilmember Bearfield brought it up and, and, and I know it happened before that. And so I'm just grateful that we are seeing it come to fruition now, so thank you.
I think our employees are excited as well.
All right, so, um, as you guys have heard me say several times already, um, our budget calendar, so on the 27th, so next Tuesday, will be, um, presented again for, for you as part of budget audit. Um, hopefully we'll be able to have the, uh, summary, uh, voter-approved tax rates and all the other tax rates and the proposed tax rate, um, for the budget. Um, depending on when we get the stuff from, uh, McCad and the county, um, in order to prepare that information. Um, we will also, um, go over the budget requests, um, that'll be included in the proposed budget that'll be submitted, um, that Friday, as well as the use of the special project reserve, um, which we discussed at the last budget audit committee meeting, um, with the plan to come before you then. Um, on the 3rd, we'll present the budget, um, at work session, um, and go over everything that's included in that. We'll also have a resolution to set the public hearing for the budget, which will be, um, set for August 31st. We will then, um, have a series of workshops in August at budget audit committee meetings, um, to go over the CIP, um, and discuss the projects that have been submitted and how that, uh, works out. Um, on the 17th, we'll have a couple of items before you. The resolution to set the public hearing and vote date on the proposed tax rates, which would be September 7th, as well as the first reading on the ordinance setting the departments for the city. Um, on August 31st will be the special council meeting, um, to hold the public hearing and vote on the drainage charge resolution, um, which will be, uh, which was discussed earlier, um, but will also be on the agenda today, um, setting that date. And then the public hearing and vote on the annual budget, which will include the fee schedule as well as the CIP. And finally, the second reading on the ordinance setting the departments. Already mentioned that the public hearing and vote on the tax rate, ordinance would be on the 7th. Um, and then we'll have a final workshop at budget audit, um, in September to go over and, um, amend the, uh, CIP plan, which will bring the resolution before you on the 21st.
All right.
Just a quick question, I'm trying to remember, where does the, the, the bond amounts or, cause I, we're talking about perhaps incurring a large debt amount this year. Does that, that isn't happening in this process? That, we finalize it in February or I'm trying to remember the, the numbers?
We'll, in the, in the rate-setting process, we'll be able to tell you in the coming weeks, like dialed in, it's gonna be a 40 or 43 million dollar program. In August, we'll, um, get a better sense of what projects it is. And then we'll work to go out for a sale, you know, we'll, we'll start that process in like November, December and try and complete it, you know, in February, March, depending on when, where the rate pressures are.
So the, that number is part of this process too, that?
It is because, you know, the, the, the debt portion of the tax rate dictates how much gets generated in the CIP. So what we're, what I'm comfortable saying at this point, and, uh, Nick, again, correct me if, if, if I go too far here, but we, we think we'll bring you a CIP number in the low 40 million dollar range at a minimum.
And those CIP projects will kind of do the same thing that we did today on looking at kind of where, what the priorities were and how they kind of fell out and how they meet our goals.
I just wanna do a time check, it's 5:38 and I don't know, do we have an executive session today?
We do have a short, need for an executive session.
Okay, I don't know if some of this discussion needs to get punted.
Yeah, but we will be back to, back to you in August with actual projects and rankings and, yeah, so you'll know where the 42 million dollars is going and have input into it. We appreciate your time and energy on this today. And if you have individual feedback from me beyond what I've said, or I, I welcome it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, are there, um, okay, are there any requests for future agenda items?
I mentioned it earlier, but I wasn't sure if it was in the middle of a comment about us having an opportunity to work with staff to look about and see what it would take to publicly declare racism as a public health crisis. Because there's been over 90 cities in the country that have done so already. And I've had several conversations with, um, members of the National League of Cities. And so I, in, in light of what Dr. Griggs said today, I just wanted to put that to the forefront.
Any other requests? We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:39 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, CTWP versus City of Waco and Texas Document Solutions, Inc., clause number 277-3, 559-4, pending in the 170th Judicial District Court, clause number 10-18-00073-CV, pending in the Court of Appeals for the 10th District of Texas. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072. And three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:40 PM.